Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 6th work session meeting of the Cornwall Central School District Board of Education. At this point, everyone is aware that on October 28th, I believe, we lost a true valuable gem in Melanie Mulrow Robinson, a former colleague and past president of the Board of Education. She truly was a gem for the community and Cornwall School District. I know that many people think of her as a leader, and I would say that she was more than just a leader. She was an advocate. She was a mentor. She was a staunch supporter of public education and an inspiration, actually, to many of us around this table. And so I think it's only fitting that we start this meeting by off-standing and honoring her with a moment of silence, please. And remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to follow. Thank you. So thank you for that. And, you know, our sympathies go to the Mulroy and Robinson families on their loss. I'd like now to recognize visitors for public comment. We will open this session. There'll be two sessions, one now and one at the end of the meeting. If anyone is wishing to come forward, I ask that they come forward, state who they are, talk into the microphone, and I'll just remind everyone that there is no cross dialogue, so to speak, with the board. Please raise your issue and provide a description of it, and we will conduct a follow-up at our earliest opportunity. So with that, I'd like to open it up for anyone in the audience for any comments that they may wish to share. Well, very good. So with that, then, let's move on to our next agenda item, which tonight, we try to limit our number of presentations in the interest of time and efficiency to one of these work sessions. So we have a double header tonight. I think they're very important presentations to make, and I thank Terry and his staff for accommodating our request to make this happen. So Terry, I'll just turn it over to you for any further introduction, please.
Thank you. So we have our principal, Kathryn Wilhelm, and our director of K-12 guidance, Joe DeBolt, who will be joined by other staff members and students to share an overview of the drop-rotation schedule that we are in the process of laying the groundwork to be implemented next year. So please note that I've asked presenters to keep it at a higher level. This is really intended to give the board and the community an overview of what the drop-rotation is, why it was sought out years before my time, and why it's important today. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Wilhelm and Mr. DeBolt.
I am just going to introduce a couple of the people we have with us tonight. We have Mrs. Jean Rose, our English Department Chair, Mr. Mark Ray, one of our assistant principals at the high school, Brian Creden, our Business and Tech Department Chair, and Mr. Anthony Ravinsky, our Music Department Chair. We also have, we have asked Nick and Kate, our Board of Ed reps, to help us present tonight as well. So, let me grab the clicker really quick. So, I saw, I happened to see this picture a couple of weeks ago. This is what used to be the high school at the middle, now our current middle school. This picture is taken in 1970. And I think that we can all agree that our learners and educators are much different today than they were when this picture was taken. If the pandemic has shown us anything, it is that our students' mental health is a priority, and human connections are more important than we ever possibly could have imagined. This new schedule will allow us to meet those critical needs and offer more exciting, engaging curricular opportunities for our students. So, this is kind of like our what-if. You know, if we can put this schedule in place, when we put this schedule in place, these are some of the things that this schedule will allow us to offer our students, our staff, create culture in the building. So this will offer four more credits to our high school students throughout their four years without changing the start or end time of their school day. It will offer our special education students more electives instead of a rigid schedule that does not allow them to explore their areas of interest. Students can take extra courses without giving up lunch. This will improve our daily attendance and student performance, and Mr. DeBolt will explain that in just a little bit. It will also allow us to introduce a plethora of workshops and activities for students to engage in without taking time away from academics. It will also offer our staff more time to collaborate and work together as a team to better support our students. It will virtually eliminate all disruption to academic time by having many of our meetings during that community lunchtime. It will foster and deepen the connections between our students, our student body, and our staff members, and it will allow our students to choose more than one elective pathway, so art, music, tech, business, or double up in an area of study. So if a student knows what they would like to pursue early on, this will allow them to double up in those areas. So what is preventing CCHS from having these benefits? And what I showed you before was that picture from 1970. We have currently had the same schedule for decades, which is an eight-period day with three lunch periods. So this schedule limits our possibilities and opportunities for our students and staff. We are also one of very few schools that still offer an eight-period day with three periods for lunch. So this is our current schedule, just really quickly. So what is a drop-rotation schedule with community lunch? So, community lunch is a full, building-wide pause on instruction for the day. All students and staff will eat lunch during this time period. Lunches will be served through multiple points of access throughout the building. We are working with Buildings and Grounds and Food Service to discuss this. Students will have access to more than just the cafeteria. They will be able to use the lobby, the gym, our courtyards, the way that they were intended to be used when the building was built, our academic wings. We will open up the library. We will have quiet areas of study. The testing room will be open. The tutoring center will be opening, open. Our counseling suites will be open, and we will also have supervised classroom areas where students can meet, students can collaborate, and students can really drive the bus with what community lunch can offer them and the opportunities that it can offer them. So, the drop-rotation is what Mr. DeBolt is going to talk about.
Thank you, everybody. So the drop-rotation schedule, I know sometimes it's easy to see visually, so we have some visual samples, but basically, the long and short of it is that there's a morning and afternoon class block that are four periods. Periods one through four happens before community lunch, periods five through eight after the community lunch. All students eat lunch at the same time, and students meet for six out of eight classes each day. So our current academic model right now that we offer is an eight-period day. With lunch being taken out of the equation, that's actually seven academic blocks. This schedule allows for eight academic blocks with a guaranteed lunch. So two classes are dropped each day, hence the drop-rotation, okay? One in the morning will drop out from the block that's periods one through four, and one will drop out of the afternoon rotation, which is periods five through eight. This is what a sample would look like. If you can look really carefully at Day A and Course 1, that would happen in the morning. If you look at B, it happens in the second time slot. If you look at Day C, it happens in the third time slot. And if you look at Day D, it's out of the schedule. So it's cascades, okay? So basically, the periods just kind of, you know, cascade and roll through. It looks confusing if you look at it just numerically. Everybody's brain wants to make sense of sequential, but the best way to look at it is that cascade, okay? If you look at Day B and four, Day C, four where it is, and Day D, four where it is, and then Day E, four is gone. Okay? That's the best way I can kind of describe it to everybody. But basically, what it does, again, is it rotates periods one through four in the morning block and periods five through eight in that afternoon block, again, offering more academic touchpoints or opportunities without it being such a frenetic pace, okay? Each period in this drop-rotation schedule sample would be 55 minutes of instruction. There's eight academic periods, which I just said with a guaranteed lunch. There's four-minute passing time, so we're going to move from seven transition times to six. So less transition time, less wasted time. The third block will be 56 minutes long to accommodate for announcements. We would do the pledge and the letter day in the morning. That takes about 20 seconds. And the announcements that we normally do in the morning would happen during the third block. Why the third block? Because it's right before community lunch. That is the opportunity to tell people, tell students, there is a club meeting, there is different activities going on, there is going to be a guest speaker in A21, there's going to be a mini-college fair located in, you know, some portion of the building during that time. That's why we would like to do the announcements during that time, just add that extra minute. And remember, a minute, of course, we all know announcements sometimes last more than one minute, but the beauty of this schedule is that it doesn't affect the same period over and over again. If you look at the third time block in Day A, that's Course 3. Look at Day B, it's Course 2. Day C, it's Course 1. Day D, it's Course 4. So again, that effect that happens to certain periods at certain times of the day is not there. The lunch would be 50 minutes of community lunch, and again, disclaimer is that specific times are still in process, but this is at or around where we'd want to land, okay? The reason for this type of schedule with the 55-minute and the 50-minute community lunch is we really took into consideration from all the years that we've been researching this with all the different schools. We asked them, "Your community lunch, good time, less time, you know, whatever?" And most schools said, "If we can do it all over again, we'd probably shave off like five, six, seven minutes," okay? So we took all that into consideration into our drop-rotation model that we'd like to present here. So this is a sample, okay, of what it would look like for a student's schedule. This is a student who can take seven and a half credits. If a student takes seven and a half credits at CCHS currently, they will not take lunch, okay? And again, sometimes, they choose that. Sometimes, though, it's a choice that affects their mental health. Sometimes, though, it's also a choice between, well, I couldn't pick just one thing. I couldn't pick the one thing between two things that I really, really wanted. So in this schedule right here, you can see, student is taking all of their five core areas, so their four major core, their language, but this student, who's a ninth-grade student, also wants to take orchestra and also intro to business. This schedule allows for that. If we did not have this type of schedule, that student would only have to choose between orchestra or intro to business as their elective, okay? So the benefits of the drop-rotation schedule, I kind of named a few of them, but I want to just point out a few. So the increased instructional time per period allows for deeper and richer learning opportunities, more collaboration and hands-on application of skills. It mimics post-secondary instructional models, okay? College courses that are longer, on-the-job training courses that are offered, trade schools, there is a longer stamina that's needed for the courses that happens after high school. More student opportunities to take electives or classes of interest, which would increase motivation or desire to come to school. School should be fun for kids. School should be where students want to be. In our elective areas, our arts, our music, it drives that for a lot of our students. So it increases the student engagement and attendance. Student targetedness and attendance will not affect the same course every day. Remember that beauty of what I said. If you have math first period, if Joe DeBolt had math-first period in high school, small disclaimer here, I was not a good math student, and if I had it first period, oh, boy, okay? So instead of it being that, oh, boy, or if I'm coming in late every time for math, and me just basically have a preconceived notion that math will be devastating this year for me, math won't be in that first-period block. It might be in the second block, and then it might be in the third block. So again, it offers different opportunities. We all know that sometimes after lunch, we all get a little sleepy, or we're a little hyped up. Again, it doesn't affect that class. There are teachers that say, "Oh, my God, I have the class after lunch," or "I have the class before lunch." In this model, there is no more of that, okay? The individualized option fosters a sense of self-awareness and independence as students explore personally meaningful opportunities and paths, and it achieves balance. And I think this is, you'll see this later on about our why and our purpose. Students have more opportunities at a less frenetic pace. We all can sit there and say things like, you know, "Well, if we wanted to add an academic opportunity, why don't we just go to a nine-period day at 40 minutes?" That's frenetic. They are preparing for nine periods a day, not having lunch in their schedule, and I just think that that is way too frenetic for them. They'll only have to prepare for six classes each day, but still have the ability to take eight. They will be guaranteed a lunch period even with the full schedule. Now, for this slide, for students, I have Kate and Nick here. Kate and Nick, we invited to a virtual meeting we set up with students from Rye High School. We allowed our students and Rye High School students to meet, and we basically told our students, "Ask them anything." We just said, "Ask away," because they're living the schedule that we're proposing to go to. So Kate and Nick, if you want to make any comments?
Hi, everyone. So me and Kate, a few weeks ago, had the opportunity to meet with students from Rye High School on a Google Meet, and overall, their experience in this drop-rotation schedule, we both learned that they have more time to do things that they couldn't do before because there's so much more time, and they just overall enjoy it more than the previous schedule that they had. And if I'm going to be honest, like, at first, this schedule, it was not appealing to me. I'm not a fan of change, but once Mr. DeBolt and Ms. Wilhelm sat with us and told us everything about this new schedule, I became like more of a fan of it because I realized how much time now you have to do things you couldn't do before. And overall, from other students' opinions, I know the upcoming seniors, the current juniors, aren't big fans of this change, but I feel that if they have the same opportunity we had, learn about what the schedule is, what it has to offer, I feel like they'll be more fans of it. And I know change is hard, but overall, I feel like this schedule is necessary for Cornwall High School.
I think that also, as a student who really wants to get as many credits as possible, if I could get four more credits and save time spent on that in college, I would do that instantly. If I had that option, I would be doing that right now. So, and I mean, I think that there are classes that you dread, and what they were saying is, I even asked them, like, what, I was the only person, I really asked, like, "What don't you like about it?" And no one had, they all just kind of looked at each other and was like, "We don't have anything we don't like about it," other than, like, maybe you don't want to come to school one day just because you don't want to go to school. But I mean, no one had anything bad to say. There was no chaos during lunch. We could even hear in the background, we could hear students, like, walking through the hallways, or like, I don't know, they were doing some sort of activity, and it sounded really fun. And I understand everyone's concerns, and I know it's easy for Nick and I to say, like, "Oh, like, we're, like, we get it, we get it, because we won't be here next year," but I think it's an important change that needs to happen, and I think if we just kind of, like, dealt with the maybe rockiness in the beginning, then we would be okay, because they all seem better off for it. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you, guys. And so again, I know the big question is, so, you know, why did we invite Kate and Nick? Well, they're seniors, they're not going to experience this. Well, you know, they're here as part of the Board of Education. We wanted to really just make sure that, you know, if anybody was asking questions or talking about it, they can kind of say, "Hey, we were at that meeting, and, you know, this is kind of what was said," or "That question got brought up." Our underclassmen, and this is why I love this school district, because after the meeting that we had with Rye, you know, the Rye students, a lot of our freshman students, freshmen, came up to us and said, "Hey, no offense, but if you sell, you know, bring this out to the kids, I don't think it's going to land as well unless we do it." So the freshman students, the underclassmen said, "We, can we roll it out to our peers?" And, like, fell out of my chair, because I was like, "Yeah, that sounds like an awesome idea. Let's do that." But I think it just speaks volumes to the students' caliber that we have, but also the excitement that's around it, and I think the peer-to-peer basis, I think, is going to land really, really well with that approach. Okay, so this, I'm going to turn this over to some of our staff members, Mrs. Rose, Mr. Creden, and Mr. Ravinsky.
Good evening. I think that all three of us were at the, went to all of the site visits way back when Lynn and Prado was here, back in, back in the day, before COVID, when we first considered bringing this to Cornwall. I think we've all been on board. So we went to Warwick, and we went to Suffolk Schools to see their site visits. And I think that I went personally because I also am not a fan of change. I think that it can be really daunting to consider moving from something that we've been used to for a long time. But when I saw it in action, when I watched the community lunch, and when I saw and talked to teachers and students who were, who were already immersed in this, I was really, I was convinced. And I was convinced for the staff and school because of the time, the amount of time, the happiness, the relaxed atmosphere that was there, that they were truly happy to be where they were during the community lunch, which you don't always see at the school. You see very serious and very earnest and very focused students, which is a wonderful, wonderful thing, but sometimes, it can be a little bit much. So, we, we just really feel like for staff and school, too, that it can increase the planning time for our, for our teachers. There are so many benefits. The community lunch gives us an opportunity, right now, it's a kind of a crapshoot whether we get to have lunch with each other and who we get to have lunch with because of the different schedules that we have. I very often don't even see my colleagues except for during our sit-meetings or something, you know, or in the hall passing. It's, it's busy, and it is frenetic at times, so I think that that would really, this will really help us. I think that our ability to connect with kids is something that we could have more time to be able to do. Right now, I think it's just very limited what we can do for our students outside of our classroom. And during the community lunch or during our off-times, we could have more time to meet, collaborate. I could do writing conferences, so much, and make myself more available than what I could ever have done before.
Hello, everybody. Brian Creden. This is the, at least the fourth time I've been on one of these committees, and I am so excited to be here right now because I feel like it's moving forward for the first time ever. So thank you for having us here today. I appreciate it. I literally could have retired last year. I decided, "I'm going to stay until this happens. I want to work in this system." So this is, this is exciting for me. This is a change that I think, if I was teaching the same way or coaching the same way I was when I first started here 34 years ago, I don't think there'd be many people in my classroom or many people coming off my team. We had to update, we had to change, we had to come up with better technology to use in both the class and in my athletic career with the kids. So this, to me, also needs change. I, I feel like I was in that picture in the, in the 70s, except everybody in that picture had a lot of hair, and I did not even then. So I'm really excited about it. I'm excited about the ability for our students to actually have a pause in the day, to go hang out with their friends, to go talk to other people, to not sit in my classroom and eat lunch, because I'm an elective teacher and I allow students to do it all the time. I really think it's important, coming off of COVID, what we're seeing at the high school and, and at all the school levels everywhere, I think you've seen it even at your own places of business, what people have gone through and not having that interaction, and now we're realizing it is so important at schools to give them a time to, to unplug and spend some time just hang out with some of their friends. One of the most nerve-wracking days for any freshman is that first day when they step into that cafeteria and they don't know anybody out there, and this is going to eliminate that. No matter who, they're going to have one of their friends out there someplace to have lunch with. So I think it's really important, and I thank you for allowing us to be here today to talk to you.
Tony Ravinsky, the music guy, music chair. SEL learning is my job. It's what I do. Social-emotional learning is how, is how I roll. Community lunch is my life all the time. The kids are always around. I experience that cafeteria all the time, and I'm excited to have them have the ability to eat with their friends. I know with my students in particular, when they come to my room, it's a safe space, it's a place to go, and it's a place for them and their friends to be, and they're going to be able to choose that with this opportunity, which I think is great. And then I'll, and I will keep it short, because I know this can be a long night, but the one extra thing I am really excited about is that they're able to choose more than one elective. These kids get torn a lot by, "I have to go do this, I have to go do this, I like this, I like that," and they have to give things up. And to see that end and be, you know, kind of squashed a little bit, and to have kids do more than one track, I think, is really important, because I think they do enjoy it, and they're just, the time constraints make it tough. There's definitely kids who have given up a lunch, where I say, "Go get your food and come on in and let's sing," and I'm okay with that because I want them to have that opportunity. So they're there with their friends, they're there where they want to be, and recently, I did just have a kid, I told this to Mrs. Wilhelm today, say, "This is the one room that I feel safe in and I know my friends are in." So to have that opened for the day is definitely a positive step forward, and when we can schedule this, to give them more than one choice, I would definitely appreciate that. So that's my take on that end.
Thank you so much. I think we have one more slide. Yep. So basically, just really quick, the extended instructional period allows for deep learning and hands-on application of skills, so like your science labs, your physical education, technology, or any class that requires setup, changing, breakdown, can now have more meaningful instruction. We joke about it all the time. Swimming unit and gym, it's get changed in the locker room, come into the pool, swim, like, get in that pool, jump in. I mean, they're barely wet, and they basically say, "Get out," and, you know, "Go change in the locker room," and so on and so forth. So science labs, same kind of concept. They have to set up a lot, and they have to break down a lot. They can obviously do deeper-level instruction. So it's a diversified school day, meets the needs of everybody individually for academically and socially, the less daily transition, which I mentioned earlier, and it also allows time to build more authentic relationships with students outside of the classroom.
time to build more authentic relationships with students outside of the classroom.
Okay. So benefits of community lunch, I know a lot of them have been mentioned, so I just want to kind of recap. It ensures that all of our students get a break, including our students who have, you know, full schedules, who are taking a ton of classes, who are AP students. It's ability for students to have their academics, their achievements celebrated. You know, sometimes we have to cram things in at the end of the day. If any of you have art students in here, oftentimes that gallery is open and it's kind of like pop in on your way out of the building. That would be a great thing to display our students' artwork and to have those studio gallery shows during community lunch. We mentioned, like, a mini, one of the schools that we went to when we toured Suffolk, and they had a mini college fair going on, and the kids were doing the presentations at long tables in the hallway, while a group of other kids were getting ready for a debate with another school. And then someplace else in the building, they were having, basically, how we do the drag and breakfast, they were having a drag and lunch, and they were giving certificates and awards to students who, you know, for numerous reasons. But there was a bunch of stuff going on during community lunch. So it increases the ability for students and staff to connect outside of that academic realm. I think sometimes our students feel that if they're, you know, they have an English teacher, and if they're not the best English student, sometimes they internalize that to mean that that, that English teacher doesn't like them, or doesn't value them, or doesn't appreciate them. And this allows for those connections that are outside of the classroom. So it doesn't have anything to do with what your grade is. We are connecting on a personal level. Oh, you really, you know, you play hockey outside of school? I didn't know that. Let's, you know, bring that into the conversation, and that will help, you know, instruction as well, those connections, scientific studies, increase academic performance, increase attendance, and will also increase our students' want and desire to come into the building. Student-led activities will have the ability to meet with students due to their availability. It allows for infinite possibilities regarding these activities and programs. They can meet with college reps, career professionals, and other enriching activities without missing academic time. Right now, we are constantly stealing time from academics to run leadership groups, to meet with college reps. It is all day long, even to do our class meetings, or a lot of other things that guidance needs to do, they wind up being push-ins, and we are taking academic time out of the classroom. We are also talking about, you know, doing enrichment workshops, luncheon learns, et cetera. So basically, kind of like professional development for our students. So these are just, you know, I'm not going to read them all, but some unit lunch possibilities and ideas, book clubs, quiet places, intermurals in the gymnasium, leadership groups, counseling groups, peer mentors can meet, safe school ambassadors can meet, taking a look at meeting with students who may be avoiding school and potentially working on some of those attendance issues, grief groups, and then, you know, of course, the possibilities are really only limited by, by our thoughts and our collaboration, and this is really something that the students are going to be involved in. You know, what is it that they would like to see in the building? We put out a survey last year, and many of our students were really interested in learning American Sign Language. And so that's a workshop that we could potentially run during community lunch for a couple weeks, for whoever's interested. It's not something that's forced, but if you're interested and you want that opportunity and you would like to learn that skill, come on in, we're going to meet and, you know, see to, and we'll have an instructor there for you. So then just potential possibilities, two fundraisers, service events, leadership council, school spirit activities, athletic team meetings, we can, so I think Suffolk did, they had pickleball, is that, they had a huge pickleball tournament. And basically, it became like a pep rally, the whole entire school went to watch this pickleball tournament. And of course, for administration as well, we can knock out class meetings during some of this lunchtime, dragon awards, focus groups, student admin groups, and then of course, connecting outside of, of really disciplinary issues, that we will have that ability to then have a lot more face time with our students, doing something fun. So currently, we have 138 students who do not have lunch in their schedule at the high school. And I just want to talk about our journey really quickly. So we started talking about this schedule, actually before 2016. So Lynn and Prado, our principal then, did a lot of work, actually kind of crunched the numbers and looked at, potentially, would we need to hire more staff to, to put this schedule into place? And then she left in 2016. And essentially, every single principal that we've had, except for the year we had two interns, have picked this idea back up, because I think that they recognize, also recognize the value in this plan and in this schedule change. And so Mr. Piazza picked this back up and had a scheduling committee meeting that the whole entire staff was welcome to join. So these are some of our individuals who joined tonight. I was on that committee, so was Mr. Ray, there were a lot of other members that were on the committee. We had a visit to Suffolk High School, then we had another meeting, then we visited Warwick High School, and then we had a third meeting where that scheduling committee voted on this particular schedule. So there were a couple other options, and I believe Suffolk was the one that had the eight period, they had that one, they had one day in their rotation that was a full eight periods, and they actually said to us, do not do that. And they said, if we had, you know, our choice, we would definitely take that day out. And so that was an interesting conversation to have with them, because going into that, our staff loved that idea. And then after talking to them, and realizing that it just basically became a testing day, and then it was a scheduling nightmare, they were, they walked out of there saying, no thank you, we don't want the eight-period day, on that one, you know, random day. So this was voted for by the scheduling committee. So we made our recommendation to the district office in the fall of 2022, and then of course, obviously, things changed. So Mr. Debold and I kind of picked back up in the spring of 2023, put a survey out to our students, basically, basically not getting in the weeds with the schedule, but asking, if you could and you had the opportunity to take an extra class, would you? If you could eat lunch, you know, if we could have a schedule where you could take an extra class, and you could also, you know, eat lunch with your class, or knock out some extracurriculars during that lunch, would you want to? And so we did a preliminary survey with our students. We also asked them for what kind of electives would you like to see offered within the building? We did our final visit with Rye, so I'm sorry. We did preliminary meetings with buildings and grounds, food service, central administration, and custodians over the summer, walking the building and potentially looking at what does community lunch really look like? Where could we offer other places for students to eat? Where could they be during community lunch? And then looking at some of those, you know, where we would need to have monitors and security and things like that. We asked our departments to develop new electives for student choice this fall, and our departments are still currently working on that. I would imagine much of our summer work will be on some of those elective offerings. And then we had a final visit with Rye, September 26, 2023. From that visit, we then were able to gather a group of students, and we were able to get our students with those students to ask any questions that they may have, and now we are here. So our next steps are creating student surveys for electives, so really honing in on what can we legitimately offer, but also what are our students interested in? So it's really not just what our teachers are interested in teaching, there has to be a student drive behind that elective as well. I may want to teach Shakespeare all day, but if students don't want to take that, then there's no point in offering it. So we really are listening to what our students would like. We need to begin to build the master schedule, which is a huge undertaking that Mr. Debold will be doing. And we will continue to meet with our buildings and grounds, food service, custodial team, central administration, and then our CCHS union building reps.
So just to kind of close it, for what our why and purpose was for, for this, I think it kind of rang true for us. We, we visited Rye, and, you know, we met with Ms. Suzanne Short, who's the principal there, and she's been nothing but great in terms of letting us pick her brain. She sends us a bunch of things, she has volunteered her own teaching staff to say, I'll talk, you know, you talk to whoever, you know, and I, you know, send them messages. And, you know, she kind of challenged us, she said, like, well, what's your why for making this change? And, you know, all of us kind of in the room were like, well, you know, we, you know, add extra class for kids, and this, that, the other thing. She's like, that's scary. And then she kind of made us all go, oh, okay, and then she's like, well, what's it about? And, you know, it kind of reminded us, and I think it kind of brought us back to center, and it's like, the why is because of our students. It's also because of what we're seeing in our world today. She shared with us their why. Their why was, they lost a bunch of students in a very short amount of time, suicide. She said, what we were doing here was, as the adults, saying, let's add more, let's give you more opportunities, let's put lots of stress and pressure on you, right? Because you want, we want you to achieve more. And she's like, and we didn't even see the forest through the trees, what we're doing to these kids. And she said, so our why was centered in, yes, we want to give you more, but we care about you, and we want to add those opportunities to connect with you. So basically, the first one right there is building those authentic connections and creating a sense of community. We need that more than ever in our school. We have it, but can we be better at it? Absolutely. Increasing opportunity and decreasing stress. Again, we want to increase opportunity, we want to set the bar higher. This is what we do here in Cornwall. But we're not going to do it at the cost of our students' mental health. And the last one, creating a more equitable and inclusive school experience for all students. Can't begin to tell you how many times students say, I can't do that, or I'm busy, or I cannot get into that, or nope, I don't have time for that. But they want to. So our environment is what's creating these conflicts, and we have the ability to change it. So we have this right here that says, change is inevitable and growth is optional. Change is hard. Everybody brought that up earlier. Change is hard. You know, Ms. Wilhelm and I, and Mr. Ray, and every, I mean, everybody that's sitting behind the scenes trying to like, put our heads together with this, we could easily just say, let's just stick with the eight-periods schedule, and just move forward, maybe we'll add an elective or two, maybe another AP course. That'll be great for our school, right? It'd be easy. But that's not why we're here. We're here to actually move things forward, and it takes a lot of work. So this one right here, I, I really wanted to bring up, says, change has a considerable psychological impact on the human mind. To the fearful, it is threatening because it means that things may get worse. To the hopeful, it is encouraging because things may get better. And to the confident, it is inspiring because the challenge exists to make things better. Of all the research we've done through all the years, all the schools we've visited, all the communications we've had, all the talking to everybody, the teachers, the administrators, the students, everybody involved, we are confident that this is right for Cornwall. Thank you, guys.
Well, Catherine and Joe, thank you for that. Before you release the mic, I, I, I don't think we're done, or you're done, but the, the formal part of the, tonight's presentation, thank you for that, very informative. I think what I'd like to do right now, and I'm going to put a, a time stop on it in the interest of, of what other things to come tonight, is like to do a, a, a question-and-answer session, right? And, and just, I'll open it up for the board, we're not going to go around the horn, I'll just, you know, first, first, and make sure everyone gets heard. And we'll, we'll, we'll stop that, knowing that this is introductory. There'll be more opportunities for conversation as we proceed throughout the, the school year, but let's say we're, we'll, we'll, we'll close down the Q and A by eight o'clock. So giving us about 20 minutes for, for Q and A for this initial round. Does that seem fair to everybody? Okay? Great. And so Bass, I saw your hand first, because I was looking at Joe. How about Bass, you go first? Thank you.
Thanks, yeah, very, very nice presentation, and it sounds like, like a very good idea. My, it's kind of out of curiosity, when the class or the lecture goes from, I don't know how many minutes right now, to 55.
Forty-seven to 55.
Yeah, 55. How does that affect preparing the lecture? What would it require from a teacher to accommodate this change?
You want to answer?
So I think it, really, your move, Rye went from 40 minutes to, you know, around about this, so that's a much larger increase. To move from 47 to 55 is tweaking. So it's looking at that purposeful use of technology, it's looking at differentiating that instruction more often. So it, I mean, really, lecturing for a whole 47 minutes right now should not be a class period. It should be taking a look at, like, the attention span of your students, and then breaking up how it is that you're instructing. So you're working on individual work, you're working on group work, you're changing gears, students are getting up, they're moving about the classroom, and your, your classroom should be differentiated to meet your students' needs. It should not be, I do not feel that our teachers need a ton of professional development to move from 47 minutes to 55 minutes. If we were doing something like 40 to 55, huge difference. Or if we were moving to a block schedule where a student may be in a class for an hour and a half, that is a large, large overhaul, but 47 to 55 is not that much of a difference. So there will be tweaking involved in lesson planning, but it's not going to be a mass overhaul.
Thanks. I, kind of, I mean, maybe, yeah, thanks for, for the explanation, but like, my mind was more, kind of, I have like, this curriculum set for me as a teacher, I want to cover the whole curriculum. I don't want to cover 75% of it or whatever, right? Okay, so if, and then I take, kind of like, I start slicing it, on those 47, you know, lectures, now I want to slice it on 55. So kind of, I mean, I expect to have more coverage per period compared to before. I mean, it's, can allow you to be more, maybe, as you mentioned, like, flexible with technology, whatever. But again, I mean, like, the, 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 the curriculum is the curriculum, you know? So that's why you have to go and remodel your lecture.
Yeah, so our, so our teachers will have to look at their pacing. We are still above New York State required seat time for curriculum and for classes. So we still are exceeding that, we are not lessening that and then asking them to meet the same requirements. So it will be looking at your scope and your pacing of your lessons and your curriculum, and just dividing it up differently. Does that, does that make sense?
Okay, so it is going to require some preparation on the...
Absolutely. It is a change, yes, it definitely will, will require preparation.
Thank you.
Jim?
Thank you, John. Thank you, Catherine and Joe, wonderful presentation. I won't go into a lengthy comment, because we're, we're, we're short on time here, but my question sort of follows on with Bass's, where, and correct me if I'm doing the math wrong here, if we go from 47 minutes to 55, but then you're really only meeting once, you're, basically, you're meeting three out of every four days, right? So 55 gets to 41.15 when you do 75% of it, that's 88% of 47 minutes. So essentially, over the course of the year, because that was my kind of, hey, it's great you get an extra class, all those benefits are good, but it seems like, to your seat-time comment, you'll get 80, approximately 88% of the seat time in a class in the new schedule compared to, what is 100% today? Is that accurate? And if so, how do we combat that? I mean, can we, can, can we do the entire curriculum? Yeah, so I, I think the, the paradox of this schedule, and the uniqueness of it, is that it's more student instructional time overall, because remember something, they can take an additional class period. So when we're talking about like, that lost little bit of time, I think we all can agree, there, there's little bits of gray that we all probably have in a year that we probably could slice out, and so, kind of what's at the point of Mrs. Wilhelm said about the pacing, and about that kind of like, what is our purposeful instruction, our deeper level instruction? But remember, the student, from their end, is increasing that academic opportunity. So, because they can take that extra class without giving up lunch and so on and so forth, so their overall instructional minutes is increased.
Absolutely. You can add an entire additional course of study, but I'm saying, within a course of study, and let's say, you know, calculus, history, English, if you're taking calculus and next year, you have 88% of the time that you had this year, are we still able to effectively instruct that course?
Yeah, so Warwick, Suffolk, and Rye, since they've kind of lived it for a little bit, we actually asked that question. We said, you know, so how are your scores in terms of AP regents, you know, anything like that? Rye basically said, you know, we don't, we don't do regents basically anymore. Warwick was like, our scores have all gone up. Rye said, all of their AP scores have gone up, and they pointed to one stat, which was the universal stat. The stat was, what is your level of connectivity and happiness to this building? And they can report that it went up, when before, they made the change to after. And so for me, I look at it from a perspective of, you're right, it's 88%, but even on the drop days, there still could be learning. So for instance, it's like, if I'm a English teacher that might says, hey, I'm not pounding you with homework, because again, that's not the you with homework, because again, that's not the point, but it's on the drop day, guys, you have a drop day, just do me a favor, read that one paragraph and come with one essential question you have. That's it. So it's just discussion. So there's still learning that happens, it almost equates to like, a college course, you know, and we meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays, you know, but all the other days of the week, we aren't.
And I'll just take up just one step, I've moved our high schools from seven periods days to block scheduling, and we talked about quality versus quantity. So just observed a lesson today, by the times the students got into the classroom, got settled, got their materials together, there was about 20 minutes of instruction, and then we're starting to wrap up to go on to the next one. So if you think of quality of seat time versus quantity, it'll shift your mind and your thinking a bit as you think of the transition.
Fair. Yeah, and this is not to challenge the idea at all, it's just, you know, analyzing it from all different angles and looking at, you know, really, state standards, and when you're teaching a course, does the state have a minimum seat time per course and all that kind of stuff? I'm sure you've looked at all that, but yeah, that's why we're trying to catch up. So, thank you, good discussion.
And just to help you imagine it, to Mr. Dade's point, when we've talked to the other teachers, they talk about the little things, that transition, the first two minutes of class, the last two minutes, taking attendance, you're meeting less often, and so instead of spending the first few minutes every day taking attendance, you take attendance once, and now you have all that valuable. So those little things that you have to do with the transition of each period get weeded out. And so it's that quality time through the rest of it. That's really what we've heard from the other teachers.
Thank you.
Yep.
Great question, Jim, thanks for that, and even better responses, thank you for that. Christine?
Yeah, it was exciting, I'm kind of, wish I could do this. Help me understand the impact this has for Bosie students.
Yep, so that is definitely one of the challenges that we have. But basically, just to paint a picture, out of that 138 students that don't have lunch, most of those students are CTEC. And the reason why is because obviously, they're trying to cram in two types of academic structures, you know, in the day. Our current juniors don't really experience lunch, they kind of, it's like a grab and go type of situation. In this model, our juniors would experience community lunch. We have worked with CTEC and the administration over there, and we said, what is the opportunity for Cornwall students to kind of be on that first bus out of there? Because it is literally 15, 20 minutes lost if they're kind of stuck. And they were like, we can get them out early, we can get them on the bus and get them out of there. What that would do for us here is they, AM students would come to the tail end of community lunch, but they still would have the after-school opportunity. So like, that's my kind of, in my mind, like, how I can kind of factor it in, because right now, our PM students don't even get the afternoon benefit of the after-school clubs and activities. So they would be able to experience community lunch. So, yeah, and that's why the disclaimer about the times, because we're really trying to massage it the best way possible to include them. I mean, if our thing is inclusiveness, we want to make sure that they're included.
Yeah, because I would say now, I think that there is a gap there of inclusion with Bosie students.
Absolutely.
So if they can be part of that community lunch, especially for juniors, that I think would be significant.
Absolutely, yep.
My second question, in one of your first slides, I'm sorry, can I ask another one?
Please.
Okay. And your, one of your first slides, you spoke about the benefit for special education students. How does that stand out differently than a Gen Ed student? Or is, how is that, yeah?
Yeah, so a special education student might have in their IP, like, resource room. So they have to take their courses, and they take resource room, therefore, they can't take an elective. I can't tell you how many times, or just due to how their schedule is. So for instance, we only have a certain amount of self-contained classes, we only have a certain amount of co-teach classes. We sometimes might have a student who might be out of sequence, maybe they're taking algebra, self-contained, which is only one section of, but then they're in 10th grade, science, and, you know, maybe it's a transfer student. And because of the way the master's schedule works, maybe because it's during periods four, five, and six are their academic periods, now they don't have lunch. So sometimes that occurs, and it's something that, it's one of my biggest, like, it doesn't let me sleep at night. Like, when we're doing the master's schedule, you know, Mr., like, over the summer, Mr. Ray and I, we're sitting here trying to figure out, and we're like, how, all right, how can we work this out? But then, we're like, we got it, and then a new student moves in. And for that student, it's a nightmare. And I look at it as, okay, so school is a challenge for you, it doesn't come easily and naturally for you. And we're now going to have you not either, you know, not take lunch, or not be in an elective that you enjoy.
Right.
And you already don't like school. I'm looking at it from the perspective of, that kid now has an infinite world of opportunities, you know, added, so.
And I'll just play devil's advocate, they might actually love school, it just doesn't come naturally to them.
Correct, yes.
And now they can be fully participating, because math isn't good, but they're good at all the other stuff, right?
Right.
So I think, you know, that balance is really important.
Or just an ability to connect during the day, because, you know, we have amazing students in our building, we obviously have tutoring centers and everything like that, but a more established tutoring center where there's a more consistent timeframe where everybody can benefit, instead of it just being, you have a study hall on a C day during third period. Because that's what we do now. It's tough.
And I'm not asking you to tell us, I'm just asking, I'm assuming, you've done the analysis of like, what are the risks? What are the downsides? What are the teachers going to be, what do you anticipate their challenge questions being and such? Because I think this was all very positive, but, you know, the Bosie's thing, we didn't talk about, so what are those challenges that we need to anticipate and be ready for?
So I did ask department chairs a couple of weeks ago to just gather, you know, questions and concerns from their departments that we were able to then answer in one of our department chair meetings after school. So I have really tasked, you know, the department chairs with rolling out to their particular units, what their schedules should look like and will look like. So we have had to work out, you know, science is kind of a little wonky, because there's labs that need to rotate, and so we discussed potentially first looking at pairing back-to-back, the lecture with the lab, and then we spoke to the students, and we spoke to the teachers in Rye, and they were like, no, don't do that. So we, you know, we had those conversations, like, do you want a student, let's say a student doesn't like science, that you have them now two 55-minute periods back-to-back? And once we presented that to the teachers and to the students, they were all like, no, thank you. Not, we don't, we, you know, we don't want to do that. So we definitely are factoring in, you know, what their concerns are, what their questions are as well, in looking at what can we make work? You know, we've spoke to Mr. Ravinsky about lessons and how that's going to work as well, and our students had some questions and concerns about that, so I feel that we've, you know, we've answered those, we were able to ask the Rye students how they felt about some of those issues and how they worked out there. And then just coming back and answering those questions with our department chairs, who then are filtering that information out to the staff. We are going to work, it's so funny, some of our students were very concerned about student behavior during community lunch, and I had to remind them, they are so well-behaved. That's not to say that we don't ever have issues, but our students are really, really well-behaved. And what I saw in each building was, and if you work with kids, you know this, the more responsibility you give them, the more responsible they are. And so if this is something that they're included in building and a part of, and this is their culture, the students in Suffolk were, you know, they were chastising one another, like, you left stuff over there, you can't do that, they're going to shut down this area, and we're not going to be able to sit here anymore. So they really police themselves, because that's what they would do. So if students left a mess in one area, they shut down that wing, you can't sit there, you know, they would close it for a week, and then they would open it back up, and really, the students kind of regulate each other's behavior. And I think it's, it is less issues, because they can come and go and do the things that they want to be doing, and they want to do those things, so therefore, they want to be there, and there are not the issues. You know, in the gym, when we visited in Suffolk, even the students who weren't necessarily engaged in playing volleyball, were sitting in the bleachers and they were watching. They weren't on their phones, but they were watching other people play. And so they were participating in whatever way they felt comfortable, but still included. And so, you know, I think that we're going to work with our staff on what are some of their concerns, and what do we see, you know, where would we like those places to be open during community lunch? And then essentially, when it gets rolling, the students will really drive that bus about where the areas are in the building that they prefer to be. So I think it's, we're going to plan, and then we're going to have to see it in action and see what it really looks like.
Yeah, that's great, Catherine, thank you for that. I think it's important that all the different constituents actually provide some objective feedback on that, and then you find ways to mitigate these issues, because there are a host of issues, but I know, like I've always said, none of us is as smart of as all of us, and if we put our heads together, I'm sure you're going to find ways to overcome those challenges that emerge. Brendan?
Thank you, John. Just one question, this being a Board of Education presentation, I have to ask the boring fiscal side of it, is there any expected budget implication to this change? You know, I'm hearing a lot of more opportunities, more electives being offered, I'm assuming that there's going to be some time freed up for teachers that presumably could cover them. Does that cover all of those slots, or would we reasonably be expected to hire new staff to cover those as well?
So I will take that, because I asked the fiscal question, what, a month ago? Just kind of, we've gone through different evolutions of this, and with this change, we are looking at possibly some additional resources needed, but we're also looking at things like, you know, there's a decrease in enrollment at the high school right now. So how do we change things so we're keeping all of our people, but also planning for the future? So you might need to add different courses to a teacher's course load, so that he or she is made whole, rather than just looking at, well, we've lost 50 students at the high school two years ago, another 50 last year, and then looking at enrollment this year, that's just the actual reality. So how do you utilize resources differently? We're also looking at the potential for adding monitors and other positions like that for just sheer supervision. High school's a large place, so making sure that we have areas covered. And then the point that I just don't want to get lost in this is, this is really an investment for the future. I was floored when I got here, you know, I have a 10th grader in Fairfax, you know, he, as a 9th grader, you're not sure what, I don't care how confident you are, you don't know what you're doing. So you may think you're the music, you're the next Broadway star, but you're limiting your options. So he, every year, has two electives, he can go down two different paths, field them out and see what he wants to do. I just think that's so important for our students. So with the addition of electives and additional courses, we may need to figure out, what is that one position that can really cover a different variety of electives to add to the schedule for next year? So it's not fully solidified, but there will be an additional resource cost to this, but nothing major, because we're also looking at, how do you do things differently at the high school?
Thanks, Derek. And thank you, everybody, though, I didn't mean to not recognize the great presentation, that was tremendous. Thank you.
All right, Christian?
Because, to be brief, I'm just going to say that unlike many people, I don't think this is a good idea at all. And I will just say, this kind of idea of change, that if we think this is new, I would just encourage anyone to look at any education reform document from about 1895 to 1915, and you will find every idea presented pretty much in those documents. And if you want to do the short, just read Lawrence Kremen's Transformation of the School. But I'm just going to read something from the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development from August of this year. We've used hundreds of research studies on the topic while writing our book, and we have advised thousands of schools on scheduling. Here's what we have found, there is no best or perfect schedule. Research has not conclusively identified a correlation between scheduling models and student achievement, but research is clear that the cost and teacher morale and effectiveness of switching schedule models can be significant. School district, school and district leaders should instead focus on establishing a clear vision for teaching and learning, and a clear set of goals and priorities, then make that come to life within the existing schedule model.
So I just want to put a pin in, just one data point that's missing, is that this didn't come from me. This came from students and staff at the high school, so the very people that we're talking about with morale and things of that nature, they've been dialed in since 2016 to this, so I just want to make sure that that SCL piece of community lunch is just not lost in the change. Like Mr. DeBolt said, you know, I want an easy year, but why do this now? But we've been going after this for years, so I just think that now is the time, I think, when you do things right, and it's not top-down, then I think that you see the benefits to our students. But I get the research, I will say, eight-period days, I would love, I'll do the research actually for the board on that one, we are in the minority. High schools across the country are preparing students for college and career and beyond, not in an eight-schedule, eight-period schedule day, so there's just a different, a lot of different ways to slice that.
Derek, thank you for that. It is, I think, important to note that the issue predates COVID, and this district has been, I think, somewhat fortunate from its experience with student challenges that other districts, especially those to our south, have experienced, and have used this model to address that. And so, as much as it may seem like this is cutting-edge and we're kind of the leader in pursuing this, I don't know if we're the follower or the laggard in it, and I'll leave that to the experts to decide that one. But Christian, I understand your point, and I think further research should be made to make sure, whatever we do in terms of the change, which is a constant or inevitable, I guess according to the slide that I saw earlier, is actually done in a way that's meaningful, positive, and successful. So with that, Louis?
Ever so briefly, I'm going to take us over, but quick. I am the latter part of that King Whitney Jr. quote, I'm a proponent of change, I don't take exception to it, do it right, let's go for it, and, you know, put our best foot forward. It doesn't scare me, I like, I like, I like change. And thank you guys for your presentation, and seeing all your hard work behind it. Kind of on the heels of Brendan's question, what about lunch staffing? How does that, you have all these different areas, all these other rooms and such, increase lunch staffing, by what percentage, how many people, any ideas? What's that look like?
I don't have the exact numbers for lunch staffing, I work with Amy Bishop, our Director of Food Services, she's been in the know from the get-go about this, and she's been awesome and creative about different kiosks, different things like that. I think she kind of just said, it's more just like changing, like, the time structure of day for staff, because there's a lot of prep, and then there's a lot of after. So I think it's just more of like, a shift more than anything, but she probably would be the best person to ask that question.
Fair enough.
I don't want to speak for, you know, her, you know, in that regard.
And then, very quickly, when does the launch date look like? What's your projected launch date? What's this feel like?
Day one, 2024.
2024, yeah.
Let's go.
Very clear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Richard, you're good? Thank you. Carl?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, great. And I appreciate the thought of, for right now. Just because it's topical and it was introduced, I appreciate you all finding a peer, Rye of sorts, to engage and find out, you know, their successes as well as some of their hazards that they encountered, and maybe they would have done better if they had not done that. How recent was their adoption of this schedule versus?
Rye actually had plans to make changes for the 2020 school year, and they actually went through with it. So during COVID, yeah. So it was a nightmare of a year for them. They also said, to their advantage probably, COVID was a distraction to the new move. However, because of COVID, and because of all the issues that arose from it, all the mental health issues that did arise from it, as we all know, they said it was a godsend, because basically, they had the ability to kind of pause, to take stake in what their students were feeling, doing, and had the time, already carved out of the day, to really connect and make sure that everybody, you know, was connecting with each other during that time. So they did it in 2020 of September.
Great. Was Warwick before that?
Warwick has been doing it for about a little over 10 years now, I believe. Suffolk has been doing it, I believe, since the 70s, this drop-rotation.
I was going to say, this has been around for quite a while, actually.
Yeah, most northern Jersey schools, and you're starting to see the Westchester schools just one by one, just starting to fall.
Adopted. Everyone's looking for a way to incorporate this sense of community within the school day.
Correct.
And of all the six or so models, I understand, that are out there, it seems that everyone is doing the drop and rotate to whatever varying degree, but in essence, it's all drop and rotate, not four-by-fours and all these other kind of other models that people have postulated out there. So I just want to say, thank you so much, this is a great introduction to a topic. I know there's more work to be done to make sure that when time comes for us to say, are we ready for this or not, that we'll have all the necessary information to make that informed judgment. So thank you all for being So thank you all for being here tonight and sharing your thoughts and ideas on how to make Cornwall School District, especially at the high school, better. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, we then, we'll then move on to our next presentation. I want to first thank the board in honoring our little time commitment there. I think that was constructive. And I just don't want to discourage any further debate or discussion on this matter. This is just like round one of what I would envision to be like a three-round boxing exhibition, if you will. So with that, Terry, you want to introduce Nicole and our next presenters?
Yes. So this has been a topic of interest for a while from the board. So I've met with Ms. Triasi. We could together schedule probably a weeks-long seminar for the board if we were to cover everything involving special education. But we tried to narrow it down to three areas that seem to be kind of top of mind for board members in the community, really surrounding the CSE process, our continuum of services, and how do we really engage parents as partners? So those are the three focus areas for tonight. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Triasi.
I'm sorry. Okay, so yeah, thank you for having me tonight. As Mr. Dade, no, nothing is working. Clicker. All right, I'll use this. Okay. So as Mr. Dade said, we're going to go over the CSE process. And in that will be the overarching laws that we follow, the regulations, the process of determining eligibility for special education. How do we determine if a student qualifies for special education? And that Committee on Special Education, who is the Committee on Special Education? What is it that they do? And developing the individualized education plans for students. A high-level overview of that information. Parents as partners within those processes. And our continuum of services that we provide for students here within our school buildings and in our district, as well as outside of our school district as needed. So laws, regulations, and policies kind of guide everything that we do. Special education is a very highly regulated process, procedures. So at the top, we have the U.S. Department of Education and their federal laws, the most prominent being the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA. Several, several pages of many, many words and laws. But the two most important guiding principles of those laws and regulations is, one, free and appropriate public education, otherwise known as FAP. So we, as a district, are required to provide every child who has a disability, regardless of how significant that disability is, regardless of what their needs are. We are responsible for providing an appropriate education to help them make meaningful progress, academic progress, and at no cost to the families for that education, you know, outside of regular tax dollars and things. So that comes up a lot when Harvey does his budget presentation and talks about, you know, special education budget. That's all wrapped into there. And then the least restrictive environment is the other guiding principle. It's otherwise known as LRE. So we have a responsibility to provide FAP in the least restrictive environment appropriate to meet that student's needs. So least restrictive environment would be educating a student alongside their general education peers who don't have disabilities. That's the least restrictive environment, to be able to help a student who has a disability and educate them within a general education class. That's least restrictive. But there are students who need more support than that. And the state provides a continuum of special education services that districts are required to be able to provide to students, which range. And so the latter part of our presentation, we'll talk about what that continuum is. So U.S. Department of Education has their overarching laws. And then every state has a responsibility to develop their laws and regulations aligned with those. So the minimum standard is the federal laws. And then the states have to, at minimum, do that. But then they can also provide additional regulations. And then, you guys know, as a Board of Education, you develop Board of Education policies and review those policies and adopt those policies, and some of which are related to special education. And at minimum, they have to meet those laws and regulations from the federal government as well as the state. So the initial CSE referral process. A student can be referred to the Committee on Special Education to do an evaluation and to determine whether or not they need special education by two people or two governing bodies. One is a parent. Parent or guardian of that child can refer them. Or a school district team, usually that's our instructional support team or our Response to Intervention Committee. That would be a group of professionals reviewing a student's needs and determining that, you know, either the parent or the school team is saying, you know, we think that there might be a disability here. There might, the student might need some special education services. We are going to refer them for evaluation and for consideration of special education services. There are a lot of other people that can make a request. Sometimes we have, you know, a teacher can make a request and bring that to the team of professionals in their district. We might have a doctor that makes a request or Child Protective Services that can make a request. But ultimately, it winds up going through the parent or the school district team to make that referral. So once there is a referral made, whether it be from the parent or whether it be from that school district team, the referral comes to my office. And that prompts a three-way communication between the school building principal, point of contact in my office, and the parent. Generally speaking, that conversation, those conversations have already been had between the parent and the school building. Been working with this child for a while, and we're just making sure that everybody's on the same page. Every once in a while, we might get a parent who had referred their child, and the principal was like, you know, oh, I'm surprised by that. And in further conversation, the parent didn't realize that there were other supports that maybe were more appropriate. And through those conversations, they say, you know what? I don't want to refer my child. So those conversations happen, and ultimately, the referral comes forth. And if we're going to move forward, then we determine what are the most, what are the appropriate evaluations for that student. There are certain evaluations that everybody receives as part of New York State regulations. And then there are sometimes additional evaluations that may be appropriate for some students and may not be necessary for other students, depending on what the presenting concern is. So we determine what those evaluations are going to be. We provide the parents with what's called the Procedural Safeguard Notice and the Parents' Guide to Special Education through New York State. Procedural Safeguard Notice outlines laws and rights as a parent of a child who is being referred to special education or as a child, as a parent of a child who has a disability within the school. And it's a little bit more legal in terms. And then the Parents' Guide to Special Education through New York State is a little bit more reader-friendly in terms of the language that's used and kind of outlines the special education process. So we provide those. So we determine what the evaluations are, provide the parent rights, and then we obtain written consent once we make sure that parents are informed about what type of evaluations their child is going to be receiving. They're all, you know, spelled out in writing, and then we receive the written consent. Once we get the consent back, that's when those evaluations start being scheduled, and they occur within a 60-day timeline. So something important to realize here is that this is not a quick process of my child is struggling and now I'm looking for support the next day. The special education process was never designed to be a quick process. It's designed to be a very thorough process. So taking time to assess all the different areas of need, writing those evaluations, collaborating on them. Then we mail those evaluations home in a packet. We mail those evaluations home in a packet with the contact information for each of the evaluators. The evaluators generally reach out to the parents before that to talk about their evaluations. But we also make sure that the parents have the contact information of the evaluator so that they can ask questions about those evaluations and recommendations prior to the CSE meeting. And then the Committee on Special Education or the CSE then convenes to determine whether or not that student is eligible for special education services and what those services are. So Committee on Special Education or CSE, what is that or who is that? It's a lot of people. It's not, you know, definitely not just one person. So the Committee on Special Education, here's a list of people who may or may not be in attendance. So a parent, a general education teacher is always part of the committee, a special education teacher, school psychologist, chairperson, somebody who's going to interpret the evaluation results. Now, sometimes people can have a dual role. So you may have a, depending on the type of meeting or the reason for the meeting, the school psychologist could also be the chairperson, or the school psychologist could also be the person who is able to interpret the evaluation results. But according to the regulations, these are the people or the titles that are necessary. A school physician is occasionally a part of the Committee on Special Education, if requested by the parent and if that referral has, you know, usually more of a medical-based need. We have additional parent members, are not required, but we do have appointed parent members, if requested. We have related service providers or others with knowledge or expertise of the student as needed or as requested. The student, we generally have the student participating in meetings in middle school and high school. We appreciate, you know, student voice in terms of and helping to advocate for their needs. Not always at every meeting. It depends. And we do certainly, you know, if parents ask if their child not participate, we respect that. But we, the student is always invited at the secondary level. An advocate, sometimes. If a parent brings an advocate to a CSE meeting, it can be a very, like I said, it's a very legally, it could be a very overwhelming process. We're talking about a child and sometimes, you know, special education. Like Mr. Dade said, like I can give an overview presentation tonight. I could give an entire week seminar, and we still wouldn't be able to cover everything. So sometimes it is helpful for a parent to have an advocate that is more familiar with the Committee on Special Education process. And occasionally, there are attorneys. It's not frequent at all. It's very rare that we have attorneys at CSE meetings. A couple, a handful. If a parent brings an attorney, then we will have our district attorney participate as well. But we won't have our district attorney participate otherwise. So that's the group of people. And they all have a role that they play within those committee meetings. And what they will do is determine whether or not a student is eligible for classification. And there's a lot of information that each person on that committee has to consider. They have to review the evaluations that were completed. Usually, these are nationally-normed tests that will show, you know, if a student is performing at age-appropriate expected levels or if, you know, they might have a deficit in a particular area or a strength in another area. Review any other information that's presented, either by, you know, the teacher or the parent or whoever else is in attendance. We have to consider the educational impact. We do sometimes have students who may have a diagnosis or they may have a disability, and they are not, they are performing well in school. So that's one of the criteria that we have to look at in terms of the Board of Education and arranging for services, is what level of impact is it currently having? And what level of support does the district need to provide for that student? We have to consider special factors, the level of English proficiency. We don't want to, you know, say a student has a disability when really it was because they are learning the English language. So there's, you know, things that we need to look at. Did we do a bilingual evaluation for that student? Lack of appropriate instruction. We could have a student who has gone to six different schools in four years. That happens actually more frequently than you may think. And so we're trying to kind of pick apart, well, is this a disability as to why the student is struggling? Or is this lack of appropriate education? So we got to look at that. Consideration of the previous interventions that have been afforded to the student through the school and the response to those interventions. And we need to look at the criteria that New York State puts forth, the definitions of disabilities, the regulations, the laws. And with all of that information, the committee makes a decision and recommendation regarding eligibility for services. So if a student is eligible for special education services, then that same committee is responsible for developing what's called an individualized education program or an IEP. And so one of the, you know, there's many different areas on that individualized education plan. One is that we're looking at the classification.
Nicole, I'm going to just interrupt just because it's annoying. There's a, looks like a Jeep, I think, John, right? Looks like a Jeep, three spaces from the left. If you want to check your, maybe, is it gray? Yeah. No one was going to be paying attention for the next 20 minutes, so.
Actually, I was quite impressed by Nicole's ability to just draw lines.
That was awesome.
On message. And I was like trying to follow along, saying, if she can do it, I can do it.
Well, I was going to use the example, like, you know, you may have a student who has an attention disorder or there may be just a real, true impact that everybody gets distracted by.
It was a prop.
We have to differentiate.
Okay.
I think we're good now.
We're good? Okay. You want me to continue now or do you want me to wait? Okay. So the Individualized Education Plan or the IEP. We're going to look at the classification. And this is one of those things where, you know, New York State, compared to the federal government, there's 13 different qualifying classifications. New York State provides a definition for each of those. So, you know, it could be a learning disability or an other health impairment or traumatic brain injury. And does the student meet classification criteria? And if so, and the student might meet more than one, what's the primary classification that's written on the IEP? The student's present level of performance. What can they do well? How are they performing? How is the disability impacting them within the school environment? And what are their needs? The committee develops measurable annual goals on the IEP. So for that year, what is it that the student really needs to achieve to be able to help develop the skills that they need in order to progress through the curriculum? And then what special education program and related services does a student need in order to meet those goals and to be able to progress? Then, within that program that's decided, what test accommodations does a student need? What other program accommodations or modifications? And any other considerations? Does a student need a behavior intervention plan? Does a student need assistive technology? Do they need special transportation to get them to and from school? All of those other things are also considered, and they are outlined in the IEP. You know, the committee recommends the development of that plan. So then, once the student has an IEP, a case manager is assigned. At the elementary level, that tends to be their teacher. At the high school level, it tends to be a special education teacher that they have. And that case manager is responsible for overseeing that child's IEP and making sure that the services are provided the way that they were supposed to be provided and answering any questions that teachers may have. And they are also the point person for the parent. That's the person that the parent can go to to ask any questions about special education or about the IEP. Or if, you know, instead of having to reach out to all different teachers individually, the case manager can do that. Then progress reports are sent home on either a quarterly or a trimester basis in regard to how the student is doing toward those goals that are developed by the committee on the IEP. So at the, it's just a So at the, it's just aligned with the report card schedule. So at the elementary level, that's on a trimester basis, and at the middle school and the high school level, that's on a quarterly basis. And then, the Committee on Special Education can reconvene as often as necessary to make adjustments to that IEP. Sometimes, the IEP just needs to be tweaked, and it doesn't require a formal meeting. The case manager and the parent discuss that. Any other relevant people are consulted, and as long as everybody is in agreement, there's a little process that's followed, and the IEP is amended, and consent, depending on the situation, consent could be sent home, or a prior written notice is sent home to the parent with those changes and a copy of the new IEP. Sometimes, for a more like substantial change, or something that requires more discussion, a Committee on Special Education meeting can be called, can be asked at any point during the school year by the case manager or by the parent, and the committee will convene to review that and make recommendations. And at the very least, we have to review every IEP at least once per year. So the idea is that you're going to develop a plan that should take the student through the school year, and oftentimes, we're able to do that. And sometimes, we are not able to do that, and we need to meet more frequently. Things change. So at least once a year, we are reviewing the plans. And again, just a, you know, thinking back to budgetary presentations that I know, you know, being part of them every year, Harvey will say, all right, this is where I think we're at, but the annual review meetings haven't really concluded yet. So this is what we're projecting, but we have to wait for committees to make decisions in terms of what students' needs are before we can really say this is what the budget is going to be related to special education. And then, at least every three years, that evaluation process with those, you know, comprehensive evaluations, the timeline, those take place at least every three years, more often as needed, but at least every three years. Parents as partners, parents are obviously a huge part of this whole process. So it starts with the administration and parent discussion regarding the reason for referral, as I had mentioned earlier, between the building principal, my office, and the parent. The parent will be consulted regarding the necessary evaluations, especially if that referral, the request for the referral is coming from the parent. So we understand what the needs are, so we can make sure that we evaluate all those areas of need. We provide the parent's guide to special education and the procedural safeguard notice so that there is some written material for parents to reference as needed. And then, we request the written consent, or we require written consent before we start the evaluation process. Every student has a social history as part of their initial referral, and at least every three years, the parent is the informant in that social history, providing that information. Some students require parent rating skills as part of their evaluation, depending upon the areas of need that we're evaluating, and parents will provide the information for that. Like I said, the copies of the written reports are sent home with the contact information of the evaluators, who also reach out to the parents. There is always an opportunity to provide additional information to the Committee on Special Education. The parent is a member of the Committee on Special Education that makes the recommendations. There are specific sections in the IEP under the present level of performance in which the committee will capture the needs or concerns that the parent has expressed during the committee meeting, or to that case manager previously. Even after that whole process of receiving consent and doing the evaluations, and having a committee meeting with the parent present, and a committee is making a recommendation for services for the first time, a recap of the meeting is provided in writing, and then consent is required before we can implement any of the programs or services that the committee recommended for the first time. The case manager is assigned as the primary point of contact. And after each and every meeting, or even an amendment change, a copy of the IEP is sent home along with what's called a prior written notice, which basically just pulls out specifically what changes are being recommended to that IEP versus the previous IEP, and what was the justification for that. Because, I mean, I'm sure many of you know, like, you know, even myself, going into meetings, sometimes, we're having a lot of discussion, oh, yeah, I think this, I think that, and then you're like, wait, what did we decide? And it can, you know, it could be a lot of information. So that is provided as well. And then, we have updated all of our prior written notices to include the contact information of anybody that the parents can reach out to with any questions or concerns, in terms of, for my office, as well as at the state level, and for, you know, community organizations as well. So along the lines of the parent involvement, every year, New York State surveys one-sixth of the schools in New York State on parent involvement, using the same survey for all districts. So we complete, our parents complete this survey every six years. So the last survey was in the 21-20, it was for the 21-22 school year, and then we got those results back the following year, 22-23 school year. So that survey, for that survey, we had ordered 404 surveys, because that was the amount of families that we had that year. Obviously, the hope is that every parent is going to complete the survey, but we also know surveys don't have a high return rate like that. We did have 164 parents complete surveys, which, you know, is a pretty good, you know, 40% return rate. Again, I would love 100%, but that's what we received. We don't receive it. It actually goes to PIR, which is Potsdam Institute. They receive the surveys, they analyze all the data, and then they provide us with our results. So our, our goal was that we wanted to have, we were hoping for 94% positive parent. I mean, we would love 100%, right? But we have to be realistic, too, and we were hoping for 94%. We had 90% positive responses, so that was where the majority of responses are, that they either agree, or strongly agree, or they, you know, it's frequently, or almost always, depending on what the rating was. And then, we had 10%, about 10% of our results had the, considered falling in the negative responses category, where it was either, you know, disagree or strongly disagree, or it was sometimes or rarely, in terms of the response to the question. So the numbers in parentheses is the total number, so 147 of those responses were overall positive, and 17 surveys had a overall negative review. I'm sure, you know, it would have been higher had we had, you know, the other ones completed, but, you know, we didn't get the response rate that we wanted. But it's good, you know, in terms of, we look and we analyze the responses of what come back. So, you know, two of the responses that I had pulled out that, you know, we're really proud of, of what came out, like, very consistently came back, is very positive, is that, "Teachers and school staff treat me as a team member. I feel that I am a member of the Committee on Special Education and being heard." So that is important to us, and the majority of parents who completed surveys felt strongly about that. And also, that they are receiving regular communication with the reports of their child's progress on their IEPs, in terms of how they're progressing toward their goals. Two areas of focus, areas for continuous improvement that we have pulled out of that. One, one survey response was that, you know, the committee explains options I have if I disagree. That fell into the sometimes or rarely category. So, you know, our hope is that we're going to facilitate consensus, and parents aren't going to disagree, are going to understand why the teacher or the committee is recommending what they're recommending. But with that being said, there are definitely going to be times where there is disagreement. So we are, like I said, we have updated our prior written notice to include all the contact information of who parents can contact to better understand what their rights are, and we are providing those procedural safeguard notices and parents' guide to special education more frequently. And then, if, you know, a parent calls my office, I help walk, you know, through that process. And then, the other one that came out is this question, "I feel more confident in my skills as a parent of a child with a disability." And that was falling into, you know, disagree, that parents don't feel more confident as, in their skills as a parent. So, you know, the, we have had parents who have asked us to go into their home, and to provide support in the home, and there are some things that fall outside the purview of the CSE and the school. And we also recognize that there are things that we could be doing better. So we're developing shared drive of resource supports for parents. We are working on how can we connect parents to community organizations that can come into the house, or can provide them with some additional support, such as the Office of Persons with Developmental Disabilities, Office of Mental Health. We have, even in tomorrow's superintendent's conference day, all of our school psychologists, social workers, guidance counselors, will be sitting in presentations on, through the Office of Mental Health, and additional supports that we can provide to students and to families. So like, some of that work comes out of surveys like this. So in terms of the continuum of special education supports, like I said, the students have to be provided with special education supports at no additional cost to them, and the district has a responsibility to provide a continuum of special education supports, because we know it's not a one-size-fits-all, and some students are going to need some things that are very different than other students. So I, you'll see in each of these slides, I tried to use like a pool analogy, just so that we have some kind of basis. So if we looked at it as like, you know, our curriculum is academic, but if we just, for argument's sake, for an analogy purpose, if we said that our curriculum was that, you know, all the students, by the time they graduate, they're going to be able to, you know, swim 500 yards, and know these four different strokes, and dive off the diving board, what kind of level of support might they need to be able to get to there? So some students do need related services in addition to the general education or special education instruction that they are receiving, say, in learning how to swim. They need something very specific to work on goals. So, you know, for example, we have a student blowing bubbles. Maybe it doesn't come natural to be able to blow bubbles in the pool, and you have some oral motor deficits, and maybe you need speech-language therapy, or you need occupational therapy to work on those skills that can then translate to going into the pool. You know, and obviously, in the case here, it might be working on handwriting skills or sensory skills in occupational therapy, or speech-language articulation, or receptive-expressive language, physical therapy, it might be, you know, are you able to walk up and down the stairs? Can you participate in PE appropriately? Or do you need some additional services from the physical therapist? So we employ speech-language therapists, we employ occupational therapists, we employ social workers who provide counseling. We contract, we have a contract with a physical therapist who comes and provides all of our physical therapy in Cornwall. We work with BOSIs when we have a student who requires teacher of the deaf, or hard of hearing services, or teacher of the visually impaired. A teacher from BOSIs will, you know, come to Cornwall certain days of the week, go to Highland Falls other days of the week. So that's how we provide that. Also, on the New York State Continuum of Special Education is consultant teacher and resource room. We see this more frequently at the elementary school. Resource room would be, you're pulling students out of their general education classroom for like, a period of the day, and in a small group, usually with a special education teacher, working on their goals. A lot of times, it's previewing the material that's going to come up, or it's reviewing material that has been taught, or it's working on specific skills that the student is struggling with, usually in the area of reading, or writing, or math. But in, you know, in the case of the pool, it might be, you know, practicing that, you know, the way that you're going to put your body. And then, the consultant teacher is now, usually that same teacher, pushing into the general education classroom with the student, and saying, okay, remember how we practiced that? Now I want to see you doing this during this math lesson, or doing the science lesson. So that is a service that we provide. Down here, we have specialized reading instruction, which is also provided through a resource room service. We have co-teaching, which, in our district, you'll see more at the secondary level. It is the only one of these services on the, that is actually not mandated on the New York State Continuum of Special Education, but it is very valuable, and I know you recognize that as a board, as we've been continuing to grow our co-teach programs. In a co-teaching setting, there is a general education teacher and a special education teacher in the same classroom. It is a general education curriculum. There are students without disabilities in the classroom. There is a special education teacher that is planning with that general education teacher. And oftentimes, I use this picture on the top, oftentimes, if you come into the classroom, you are not going to be able to differentiate, this child has a disability, this child doesn't, or this is the special education teacher, this is the general education teacher. Under the surface, you may see that some students have different levels of support or modifications that you may not otherwise see. And there's six different models in how that teaching is provided. Then, we also have special classes. So if you look at like, you know, the one pool over to the side is that larger pool, and then the circled pool is that smaller pool. Sometimes, we have students who have a similar learning profile, who need a smaller student-to-teacher ratio, or they need a slower pace, or they need that overall instruction for the day to kind of focus on really going a deeper dive, or more repetition in a particular skill. And so, we have classes that are designed to support students in that way. And in those classes, it's only students with IEPs in those classes, smaller student-to-teacher ratio, but they are still focused, it's still state-assessed, still taking, planning to take the Regents exams and graduate with a Regents diploma. But the instruction tends to be delivered differently in those classes. And then, we have, within our district, we have 1214 classes for students who are alternately assessed. And these are students with much more significant disabilities, who are not working towards a New York State diploma. They are working toward a skills and achievement commencement credential. We are really focusing on helping that student to be an independent, productive member of society. We are often working on life skills, independent living skills, employability skills, maybe with a job coach, maybe group housing through New York State. We will work with New York State to help support these students post-secondary, and oftentimes, students remain in our schools until the age of 21, and then transition to post-secondary supports in these classes. And we have built that continuum, so that we now have classes at the elementary, middle, and high school level, so students don't have to go back and forth as they used to in the past, sometimes at a district. And then, you know, we do have some, we do have some students who have needs that are, that we're not able to support within our schools. Sometimes, it's just because we don't have the number of students who need that level of support to create a cohort where the board can say that it's fiscally responsible to, say, hire a teacher and develop this program. And so, we often use BOSIs for those shared services. So we may have one or two students at a particular grade level, and Washingtonville may have one or two students, and then, BOSIs says, we can provide this level of support for these students. And then, other times, it's really more about the whole facility and the whole learning environment and what they need. That's why I have like, little splash pads. So sometimes, you know, in that example, you might need a short slide, and you might need a tunnel slide, you might need some spinning things, like, the student may need a lot of different things that we just don't have. We might, we don't have a sensory gym, we don't have, you know, just, there are certain facilities in aquatherapy that we don't have, but that the students may need. And so, there are programs through New York State, date placements, or sometimes residential placements, and sometimes, we're looking at home or hospital instruction, depending on the level of need, and we will make the recommendations for that. And that's the general overview of this topic that has much more depth to it. Any questions?
So, let me just say, Nicole, yes, thank you so much for that pretty quick So, let me just say, Nicole, yes, thank you so much for that pretty quick and broad overview of, of all the services that you oversee on behalf of the district. Thank you for that. I'd like to use the same format we did for Catherine and Joe's presentation, and kind of limit our Q and A session for, say, 20 minutes, knowing that there's always opportunity. If we don't get to the full list of, of questions people may have, we can, you know, continue the conversation going forward.
Absolutely.
So, with that, I just open it up. Anyone want to go first on this topic? Brendan, yeah, thanks.
Thanks, John. Thank you, Nicole, Mrs. Triasi, sorry. I, I know this is a very, I imagine that being in your position has to be one of the most challenging of, of any school district, you know, just, and you have made it clear why. There's just so much that falls under this umbrella, and it's, there's, it's all so legally complicated, too. So, just hats off to you, and, and thank you for, for all that you do. Just so, from my own understanding, you know, you, you walk through all of the, the different steps and, you know, very thorough process. My, my understanding is that all, most, if not all of those steps are, are state-mandated, right? I mean, these are all milestones that we, we have to hit. And so, is, that is the case, right? Like, it's, all of this is pretty much prescribed by the state as far as all of these touchpoints? It's not like we're choosing to, we have to hit those.
Yes. I, um, you know, each student is an individual, and the committee members that make up, you know, are individuals that are going to be using their area of expertise, right? But in terms of required evaluations, timelines, the process for if a parent disagrees or agrees, like, that is all outlined in law and regulation, and it, yeah.
Yeah. No, and, and again, that's, that's what I, that's what I figured. So, my, it sets up just my, really, my only question is, how much freedom is there for any, any unstructured conversations, you know, between parents? Because it, it just seems like with so much regulated, there, there may not even really be room for those other kinds of conversations.
Right. So, I'll also say, you know, the, the Committee on Special Education meeting itself, you know, it, it's one meeting, but we expect, and I communicate to my team, I expect that there are conversations unstructured prior to those meetings, right? I always say that a parent should not come into a meeting feeling blindsided that they weren't expecting a particular recommendation to be made. Generally speaking, you have all the information before you go into the meeting, and you can say, okay, this makes sense that based on this information, I would conclude that I would likely recommend this. And you have that conversation prior to the meeting, and in those conversations, you may say, oh, wait, we didn't consider this, or let's think about this, and it allows different opportunities for that to happen. So, there are opportunities for unstructured conversations, and we're not predetermining anything prior to those meetings, because ultimately, it's the committee that determines. And sometimes, something can come out of that committee meeting that you're like, oh, wow, you know, we didn't expect this, and, or, or this really makes, sometimes, a pa- like, a, a child will come in, and, and they'll say something, and, and, you know, you have these team of people, or parents, teachers, whoever, who think that they really know what the student is in the student's head, and what they're thinking, and, like, will have, you know, well, I really think that they need extra time on this assignment, they need extra time on the test, and, and then the, the student will say, like, stop, I don't want extra time. I get so, you know, I just like, I, I, I don't like having to be there, and I'm a procrastinator, and I wait until the very end, and then, so, sometimes, they say something, and so, conversations can happen ahead of time. Nothing is, there is still freedom. It's not prescribed. It's not like, you know, New York State doesn't say, okay, this student scored a 50 on this test, and therefore, they are recommended for this program. Like, New York State doesn't do that. The Committee on Special Education are the people that say, okay, this student scored a 50 on that test, and generally speaking, that might indicate this. However, we know this about this student, and this other person inputs this about this student, and this may be why, and we haven't actually tried this, so let's do that. So, it's, it's not prescribed by New York State, a committee is making a recommendation, but there are, it is very, like, you, you started, Brendan, it's very legally prescribed in terms of certain regulations. I, I walk into a conference for administrators, you know, in New York State, and I'm like, hi, I'm Nicole Triasi. Oh, hi, what's your title? PPS director. Oh, gosh, I can't do the laws, you know? So, it is very legally prescribed in that way, but it's a committee on, it's, it's a committee that's making decisions. And we hope that we can use all the information to make like a best educated guess and decision about what would be appropriate, and then, when that doesn't work, sometimes, that's where we struggle.
Thank you for that, Ed, a detail.
Richard?
Thank you. And thank you for this presentation. It was really informative. So, I think one of the last slides, you cited a survey that was conducted by New York State, and it showed 90% were happy and 10% were not. And I look at that basically how I look at like graduate, graduation rates. I, I think ours is like 96%, 97%, which is great, but what about the 3%? So, from that survey, we have about, I would, 15 families that were not happy. So, what can we do, and what can the board provide to your department to perhaps increase the amount of participants and the amount of families that are pleased with our special education services?
Yeah, I think, you know, it was 17 families, and I can't, you know, it's an anonymous survey, so I can't like go through and say, okay, I, I know exactly what these 17 families need. They could be very, they could be very different. I can only go on what, you know, comes back to me. And there are, I would say, in terms of like what the board can do, anytime we can increase our program offerings in district, you know, that, that, that's great. So, if we can increase our co-teach programs, if we can offer more, you know, a therapeutic program in school, and like, things like that, the board always has to weigh that fiscal responsibility and whether or not we can do that. And then, there are sometimes families where I don't want anybody to be unhappy, and at the same time, there are some times that families want things, just like in general education, where they say, I want, you know, these AP courses, or I want X, Y, or Z, and even if the board, you know, it's about whether or not they're, they're available, and also whether or not they're appropriate. So, you know, you could have a, a student in the drop schedule, I want X, Y, or Z. Well, if I can only take one elective, it doesn't matter how many choices you give me, I'm, I'm still not happy that I didn't get that. So, I would say there are definitely some things in terms of, of the board, is just looking at our programs and our offerings. And we have those discussions at budget time, you know, every year. So, I-
Something I just wanted to add that I've seen, again, I'm coming from Virginia, but I think New York is starting to put as much emphasis on this as, as we had in my previous district of, the mediation process, I think, is really, really important. I think that there's so many layers, and it can be quite daunting when you're sitting in front of, you know, 10 to 15 folks, talking about your kid, and you're, you know, you're, you think that you have all the information, and then you hear new information. So, I, I've seen from the state, a, a greater push for increasing the knowledge base amongst parents and districts of knowing that that is a, a great next step, is that should you leave a CSE meeting unhappy, or in disagreement, you don't jump right to a hearing. Mediation is a great next step. So, in my short time here, I've seen that be a productive next step, just as another attempt to bring everyone to the table. So, I, I've seen that, Nicole, probably in the past year, I think the state has started to do a better job of communicating that out, and then us in turn, starting to do that as, as well. So, I think that's one way to look at 15 families and say, you know, just even in my short time, you know, we've met in mediation with a, a few families that have left those sessions in agreement and with a, with a productive next step.
Well, and I think, you know, sometimes, in terms of legal responsibility, right? So, the district has a responsibility to provide FAP, a Free and Appropriate Public Education, in the least restrictive environment, and the district also has a responsibility to make sure that that student is making educational progress. And so, sometimes, the disagreement becomes like, you know, what's the appropriate program for that, that child? And sometimes, those discussions in terms of mediation and thing is also trying to help. It's like, we're, you know, we're not trying to fight here, but you have to understand the district's liability, and weighing, you know, what you want as a parent, and how can we make sure that we understand, you know, both sides, and make a plan that will be satisfactory to all, where, you know, you know, where we, like, and again, outside of that committee meeting, sometimes, it's helpful because it's just less people.
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else? Christine?
So, it's no surprise that this is a topic near and dear to me, but I have to say, Nicole, the pool analogy, I think, was really helpful for people who are not in this all the time, to understand the scope of what might be needed for the variety of, of resources. And I think what's really hard for us around this table often is, as it should be, these things are confidential, right? And so, we hear things in passing, but we don't always have all the facts. However, personally, I have some facts, so I'm just going to ask about those. I do, I still think we are doing a disservice to many of our secondary students when we think about FAP in least restrictive. We have potential college-bound students. I'm talking about the students that are the synchronized swimmers in the slides, right? That we are not offering co-taught, or, I think, the appropriate support for them to really exceed, to exceed, to excel, excuse me. Looking at colleges, the requirements for college admissions being, you know, a number of math classes, a number of laboratory sciences, without those co-taught options, those are classes that very capable students who learn differently will not succeed at. And as a result, we're limiting their potential long-term. You and I've had this conversation about co-taught, the numbers, what does it prove? But when we're looking at individualized situations, we don't even have the option to offer that right now. Now, I appreciate that changes were made, and we brought on, brought on an additional co-taught teacher, and I appreciate that there's a cost to that. So, I, I get the big picture, but I think that, you know, it's not a requirement or a mandate, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. On the heels of that, I think Mr. Dade and I had a conversation once, and I, you know, pay now, pay later, how are we doing early identification, beyond AIS and such, but, you know, I bet there are a number of students in our district who are dyslexic and unidentified, and struggle, and are falling through the cracks. So, what do we do for early identification, so that that co-taught isn't necessarily as needed by the time they get to the high school? So, I'm, I'm not necessarily asking for an answer, I'm just saying that, from my perspective, there's a lot of improvement that can happen in that space, in terms of the services we offer our secondary students.
And I would also say that, you know, those things are near and dear to my heart, as I go into budget meetings, too, the early intervention services, and how we support students, and the co-teach. The co-teach, at the secondary level, it's, you know, we started with, if I could provide co-teach and everything, I, I would, I'll just, you know, put that out there, but I know that, you know, there's a cost involved. So, we start with those classes who, that end in a Regents, and core classes is where we had decided to go, except for social studies, because the students historically were doing well. And then, that's where it was added. And then, the other thing that we have to just consider is, as the students get into the higher grade levels, sometimes, they want choice in terms of, they don't all have to take the same math credit, so if we're offering a math co-teach, you know, are we going to offer two different sections, or are we going to track people into one? So, those are just like, you know, peripheral conversations that we have to have when we're talking about the co-teach.
It's complicated.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, to Brendan's point, you have a very difficult job, but I think, again, if we go back to, it's individualized, least restrictive, those things can be solved for, right?
Thank you for that, Christine. Carl?
Go ahead, Christian.
Oh, Christian. Thank Carl.
So, I have two questions. The first one is, based on our New York State report card, you know, they look at the proficiency gap, I think it's indicator 3B, but I might be wrong about the number, between the general education population and the, and the special education population. And so, they look at math and, in, math and ELA, elementary, middle school, high school. And on five of these six, like, state, you know, standard the gaps, we're not, we're not meeting them in five of the six comparisons. Can you speculate about why that might be?
It's, it's, so, Mr. Dade and I have had conversations where we have-
Or I can make that a rhetorical question, and-
Yeah, so, I mean, we can, we can-
Follow up later. I just want to-
I could do a whole other presentation on it, probably, and get more, but, yes, I can make some speculations, but also, it's like, what I was just saying, it's, Mr. Dade and I sometimes, well, like, we can get lost in that data, where we think we have a trend, and then we'll look at individual students, and we'll realize, okay, wait a minute, this, this student had a very different path, and that might be why, or was it this particular course, or was it COVID, or was it this? So, it could be more of a, you know, a follow-up conversation or discussion that we can have, but there are definitely areas for improvement, you know, in terms of special education achieving those standards.
So, just my second question, which is kind of where you ended, is that, I'm just using the thought experiment that I've heard before on previous boards you. So, let's say I just won the $2 billion Mega Millions lottery, and I want to make a generous donation to the special education program here at Cornwall. Can you give me your top five wish list of things? You know, money is not an object. What would you like to have?
Do you want me to answer that now, or do you want to go look at my last five budget packets?
You can follow up, but I, I mean, as someone, as someone is in the, in the position, perhaps, to, as we go into the budget discussions, what is that wish list, and how can we, you know, obviously, I did not win the Mega Millions lottery, but if I did, what would be that, what would be the first five things on that wish list that you would ask for?
So, honestly, one of my first five things wouldn't even be special education. It would be elementary, general education, in terms of supports, class size, AIS, you know, just as Christine was saying, all those, you know, early intervention supports. We do a great job in Cornwall, we have a lot of support, and that is also, the sooner that you can intervene, or you recognize needs, we have UPK, you know, we have seats, we, so, we're developing in those areas, but the more that we can do there, and then-
I'll add just, my, my number two would be co-teach at the, I mean, Christine and I have had this conversation, I'm not even looking at high school. Co-teach at the elementary level is absolutely phenomenal for closing gaps. You're talking about the data on the report card, the earlier you intervene, and provide those wraparound supports as early as possible, so that you're not special education and support for life, is, is really what would be probably my number one. So, I've just stole one of the top five, but that co-teach is critically important, as early as possible, not waiting until high school.
Yes, and, and a unique, you know, in, in our district, because we have three elementary schools and community schools, when we consider that co-teach at the elementary school, which I am also, you know, a proponent of, when we have to look at resources, is, do we provide that at every grade level at every elementary school? Or do we provide one school, and then students, even though they can be in general education, have to move to a different school in order to receive that support? You know, and that's, that's been something that we have discussed as a district and as a board, I've done presentations on that, you know, going back several years as well.
Christian, good?
Good.
Right? So, so, what, and, and thank you for thinking so, so well on your feet with that tough question. What, what I would recommend is to really think about that, because I think Christian brings up a point that in, in, in certain things, you know, we are, it sounds like, Nicole, not to your satisfaction, those, those, those metrics, you look to find a way to improve it. Now, the question becomes, how, how do you move that needle? So, to, to maybe come back, or, or, as we proceed through the course of this year, moving towards a budget for next year, we could think about ways that resources could be allocated, or, or reallocated, perhaps, to, to address some of those, those areas. So, thank you for that, Christian. Thank you, Nicole, for your, for your comments, and thank you, Terry, for the-
John?
Carl?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, are you done now?
No. I was, I was doing a segue.
Okay.
Thank you. You're next, Carl.
All right. So, so, most of the questions I have to, I have for you are probably more geared so towards the attorneys, because they're numbers, okay? Things such as, you know, due process complaints, stain complaints, how many are out there? I wanted to say that one of the most alarming things that I find is the number of parents who have reached- who have reached out to several of us with, with the complaint of two, two things. In order for them to get the things that they need, they need to retain a lawyer. I, you know, I just, that just bothers me that, that any family would have to retain a lawyer to advocate for their child. So that would be the, that would be one. Or their second one is that they feel that they need to move out of district in order to get the things that they need for their, for their, for their kid. So my question would be, how do we resolve the issue of, oh, where parents feel the need constantly to hire an attorney to represent their kid? I mean, how can we avoid that? That would be one of them. And I think the, what are other districts offering that the parents feel a need to, that they may have to move out of district?
So I think in terms of, you know, the, the attorney, yes, I don't want a parent to feel like they have to, you know, hire an attorney. I don't think that there is a large number. I mean, if I'm looking at 400 and something meetings or families every year, it, it's, you know, a handful, if that, of students, of, of parents who have an attorney. So I would say the majority of our families are not accessing that. And to Mr. Dade's point before, really the first step that I would recommend prior to an attorney is the mediation process. And we do offer that and some parents do take it and, and some don't. But that, you don't need an attorney for that. I just want to be very clear. But, you know, in terms of parents, you know, looking to other districts and what, and what they would be able to get there, I, I don't, I don't know if it's a matter of, you know, the, the grass is greener and sometimes not really knowing because, you know, our continuum of education and supports. I do consult with my colleagues across the county. I meet every month and some of the topics that we have are in terms of what are the programs that we offer. And in fact, Cornwall offers more supports. We're the only district in Orange County that accepts tuition for students for our special education programs. We are the only district in Orange County. We have families from other districts who are asking to come to Cornwall. So, and, and they do come to Cornwall and the Committee on Special Education recommends them and we, you know, so we accept students from other districts. So I do think that sometimes there could be something in another district that I'm not, you know, aware of. I think that's a very individualized, but I think it's an overgeneralization to say, you know, if I was in another district, I would get what I want. It's such an individualized program that we don't know necessarily that that other district would make that recommendation. And I, you know, I know just from colleagues and as Brendan starts, it's a very legal process that, you know, unfortunately there are parents in every district who feel that this is a difficult process or that they have to get an attorney or have due process hearings and we don't want that. But I just don't know that going somewhere else would have made it, would have made a difference. It's more of like, you know, what, what is it about that individual student's need and how can we address that particular student? And how do we continue to look at our programs overall and increase our offerings of continuum of support such as co-teach and things like that in our district?
Okay, so, all right. Okay.
Carl, do you have more?
Yeah, I actually just kind of want to do a little follow-up on some of this. I think this is one of the programs where we got to do a more in-depth review of in the future here. The numbers will speak for themselves and I guess that's why maybe we should have had the attorney here that can answer that for us and maybe in the future that can happen. I know that we did meet with him before and he gave us, he did give us some numbers, but I, I think that we need to get more of an update on that. And I think that's something that we should look into in the future here.
Can I ask specifically, because the last meeting was what's out there?
Yeah.
Specifically case by case. So I'm just curious, what else we're looking for?
He was very vague. He was very vague, in my opinion. And I think that, I think that he could have, you know, we should have gotten, in fact, I would have loved to have asked him some more questions that day, but unfortunately we didn't. So I can either, we can either do that in an email if you want, you know, we can, we can get the answers that way. But I think that this is something where the public wants to know about what's going on here. This isn't something that, you know, I just came in here tonight and said, hey, these are parents that are, are contacting people. There's, 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 there's something that we need to review. There's something that we got to look more in depth. I'm certainly not faulting her. I think it's, the, the program itself needs to have a deep review and I don't think it's been done in years. And, and so I think that, that's where, that's personally where I'm at with it.
All right, Carl, thank you for that. I think as we move forward, there's, there's always more opportunity. I, I do want to just clarify one thing and I know we're kind of running over the time that we've kind of allocated for this, but, and I do want to talk about this a little bit more offline, but just, I, I got two, two thoughts from you and I want you to separate them for me so I understand. There's the broader thought that I heard, which was the overall program and the data as pertains to the numbers of the program. And then there's the specifics that is more legalistic, which has to deal with like case by case, specific issues. And, and what I'd like to do, because I don't want to dwell on either of them right now, because I don't think we have it at our fingertips, is, is to put that in a placeholder to, to come back to at a later date. Is that, is that okay?
Absolutely.
All right, great. Thank you.
That's what I was saying, John. I think this is something we have to come back to.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to work on that offline. All right, thank you.
John, I can, I'm sorry, I have one thing to this conversation.
Yeah, can I?
Yep.
Go Christine, because I was looking at her first.
No, it's okay. I just want to clarify one comment.
Yeah.
I was talking about intervention and I, what I meant to say was identification. So early identification of potential reading disabilities. Reading is fundamental to every single class, math, history, science. You can identify a reading disability by first grade and the earlier you can do that, the faster you can get people on track and the less likely they are to need services forever. So that's what I really wanted to double down on. I don't know where to raise that. I don't know who that goes to, but I think that's where we need to be really holding ourselves accountable.
Thank you for clarifying that. You just took care of one of my questions. So that's great. Louis?
Yeah, thank you. Just jumping on with Carl, if you're receiving emails, because I'm not receiving anything of, of kind of what you're alluding to-
I can, I, you, I'll stop you right there, okay? Any emails that I get since I've been a board member have been forwarded to everybody here, although according to some of the stuff I've read recently, that that's not necessary to do, but I have forwarded those. What I have received privately prior to being a board member, I don't have to share that.
Carl, I'm not asking you to-
I'm just letting you know.
What I'm referring to is you, you-
I think, I think you-
Let me, Carl, let me finish. Let me finish.
Well, let, let me answer your question first.
Can I ask you?
I think when we went, when we met with, I think when we met with the attorneys, I think I made myself pretty clear at that time that these were questions, right, that were asked prior to me being on the board. So I, again, I'm asking the questions again because I don't feel that the answers that I received that day were, were good enough.
Okay.
Or sufficient.
And that's fair? So, so, so let's drill down into that and possibly schedule an executive session to, to flesh those, those areas out to get more detail as it pertains to that. But I'm not sure that was your question.
It, my question is-
Is there a question to Nicole or are we, I don't want to go-
No, no, I just wanted to follow up with, with Carl. It, it, it sounds like you have a wealth of information from people that I personally don't have. And if you do, I think John had a great idea. If we have to have an executive session on this to flush some of this out and hone this in, we should, we should do that. Absolutely.
So we will follow up on that and, and, and see what's what as, as we move forward. Okay? I appreciate everyone's interest and, and, and discussion on this, Louis. So very good. Any other questions for Nicole before we wrap it up? I do have three. I had four, thanks to Christine. I only have three now. The, the first one has to do with the scoping of the services that are being provided that, that are under your, your, phew, your, your, your wheelhouse here, which is pretty extensive. I saw it said 404 surveys ordered. So, so if I do quick math, we've got about 3,000 students. I'm assuming a survey would be for every family that would be in the program. That would be IEPs and 504s or is it just specific?
Just IEPs. Just IEPs. It's a-
So that's the, so that's how the state kind of slices and dices in terms of the constituency.
Because the question-
Would it make sense for us to also include those parents that are, have kids that have special accommodations through 504s and the like?
So-
To, 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 to survey them to see if they're-
I can answer, in terms of the specific survey through New York State, it's only for students of, it's only for parents of students with disabilities because the questions that are asked are specific to IEPs and services and things like that. Now, if the district wants to do some other type of a survey, that would be something that you, you know, you guys can discuss. But in terms of the survey that New York State gives us, we can't just give that to us, to a parent.
No, that I get.
Oh, okay.
So I'm just trying to, to scope the program. So, so we have 404-
At that time.
Families or in 2021, 22 that are in IEPs. What about 504s? What, what's that, that, the scope, scope, scope the whole thing out for me because 404 out of 3,000, that's about what, 12, 13%? But what about the student population that has, you know, 504s? What, what's that number look like?
I don't have those numbers on top of me, so those are overseen by the building principals in the buildings because they're, the 504s are building-specific. I am the 504 compliance officer, so if there is a dispute about a 504, I would become involved in, in that legal process. It, the, but the, I, I can tell you that the number of 504s is significantly less than the number of IEPs. But I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. I, we could get them though. I mean, that's something that can easily-
And so the, is, is the, lack better term, the, the onboarding or assessment process similar? So someone going through an evaluation for an IEP would then possibly be evaluated and no IEP is, is necessary, but a 504 is warranted? Is there a-
That, yeah, that definitely happens. The process, the evaluation process, the requirements, the regulations are different for 504. The main difference, and actually I have like a whole chart in my office and stuff, but the main difference is that the IEP is specialized instruction and some accommodations and other things. And the 504 are just accommodations. That's, that's the, you know, in a nutshell, the main difference. There's still a body of people, a committee that's going to make those recommendations and they're going to make those recommendations based on certain evaluations or information. But the specific evaluations that are required under 504 are different. The members of the committee are different. They're not regulated that way.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying that. And then getting back to, to the referrals, because I understand we have 504, or 504, 404 back in, in, in 21, 22, that school year. That's how many were put into an IEP. How many families did the CSC review and decide not to put in an IEP?
I would have to, yeah. I don't have those numbers on top of me. But again, I, like if any questions like that, if you want to give them Mr. Dade and he gives them to me-
Yeah, I don't, I don't mean to stump you. I'm just trying to understand the scope of this program that you oversee because when it comes to resources, it, I-
Yeah, we can get those numbers to you.
I want to make sure that the, the appropriate set of resources are being applied to make not only you successful, but more importantly, the students within the district successful. Not just here at Cornwall, but in life, right? And so much to Christine hitting the nail on the head, if, if someone has been referred, what's our success rate in going from a referral to an actual, not just an evaluation? I would assume if someone's referred, it's automatic they're going to be assessed, right?
Yes.
So, so there's no such thing as being non-assessed. That, what would then, what's the, the rate of assessment to onboarding into the program? You know, determining that there is a IEP warranted? That, that would be very useful information. And, and another one, just as I'm thinking out loud, not to answer tonight, but as we move forward as a follow-up, is okay, you've outlined your process. It seemed to be a six or seven-step process from referral to actually, you know, the clock and then action being taken. What's the timeline? I know you had a 60-day clock around step five or six, but if, once somebody's identified, right, which is part of what Christine was talking about, what's that timeline from step one, you've been referred, to now you're in the program? How long does that take? Don't need to know it now?
I, I can tell you it right now. So there's the 60-day timeline from the time that the parent signs consent to when the evaluations are happening and then the CSC meeting. And then almost always that whatever is recommended, that committee meeting is implemented within a day or two of that parent signing consent and that consent form is sent home a day or two after the meeting.
I, I-
Yeah.
I would, I would hope that between like the second to last and last step, it's, it's almost, you know, instantaneous. My, my question is the full process from step one, identification or referral, to being put into the program? Are we talking a year, talking six months?
No, we're talking, we're talking about, so-
Ninety days?
We're, we're talking maybe 70 days, maybe 80 days. So we have that 60-day process. That's, that's pretty much the process and everything else after that is pretty much instantaneous. Now, there may be a case where we schedule the meeting and the parent said, I can't make this meeting. Can you schedule it two weeks later? And that could delay things, but we have a 100% compliance rate of the 60-day timeline. And so that is from initial referral process within, again, only if, only if, really only if the, if the parent doesn't sign consent right away, that might delay it. But otherwise, it's, it's within a week of that referral is happening, a couple of days, parent is getting the consent form, within 60 days, it doesn't always take the 60 days, we're doing the evaluations, having the CSC meeting, and then within a couple of days after is when we're implementing services. So the 60-day plus maybe five days in the beginning and maybe five days after, so I'm saying maybe about 70 days. Yeah. It would have to be an outlier, unique situation, but yeah, that's, it's- It's 60 days. So, yeah, it, it's 60 days. I will say, you know, we had one situation in which a student needed a bilingual evaluation in like a language that was not easily accessible and that took us a while to find an evaluator that could do that. That's like a, you know, a unique exception, but usually those evaluations happen within those 60 days.
Fantastic. Well, thank you. And Nicole, I think it's been a lot of information thrown at us. We appreciate you putting this, this presentation together for us, quite the tutorial. And I'm sure we, we can continue on having a discussion with further follow-ups and, but thank you for your presentation tonight. Well done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so that then takes us to the next item, which is committee reports. I'm just going to, in the interest of time, kind of go through there, naming out the committees. If there's anything to report, please stop me. Brendan, communication?
Yep, we have had our first communication committee meeting. We are scheduling our first forum, which will be a capital project update forum essentially, reviewing where we have been, taking a lot of the information we had from Palumbo and translating it and talking about what phase two is going to look like. The, been some scheduling difficulties because we're entering a period of high activity in our buildings, but current date we're looking at is Monday, December 4th, which would be the second full week, beginning of the second full week after Thanksgiving. So once that is confirmed, we'll, we'll push that date out for officially.
Yep, thank you, Brendan. Louis, facilities?
Sure. Ever so briefly. We met October 10th for our first meeting. We covered basically what the Palumbo Group presented to everybody in our last meeting. Got a little bit, a little more granular, but we, we covered everything they, they covered. And we have an upcoming meeting November 14th. We will begin to unpack our planning document and start looking at school to school and summarize what kind of capital repairs and maintenance is required for buildings and hopefully tee up some projects in the future.
Great. Thank you, Louis. Jim, any?
Nothing for audit and for-
Policy?
Policy. We had our first meeting and the fruits of our labor will be coming up in the next section.
Thank you. Richard, visitation?[1785.13] Richard, visitation?
All right, thank you. So now I think we had two meetings as a committee. The last one, we had a brief discussion about the charter, which is in the works. I will be sending the entire board an updated charter with the feedback that we received from the board members. Expect that in the next day or two. We have our visit scheduled for next Monday and Tuesday, and I know the committee is looking forward to that. I want to thank Megan and the administration in all of our schools for putting that together. I think it's going to be a really great experience for everyone. There's one thing that the committee has been discussing, and I just want to share it with the board. I expect we'll have more discussion about it, Megan and I, and see about implementing it is, so usually in a visitation, we have what we call open chat, and that's during the visit during the school day. And last year, we had some participants, some teachers and staff that came in. And, you know, after that all took place, we got some feedback and people were saying that it was kind of hard to attend because of the busyness of the school day. So we've been discussing the idea of having an after-school open chat. So it would be like an extension of the visitation, and it wouldn't replace the during the school day open chat, it would just be in addition to everything. So I just want to throw that out there. I don't know if we need to get into more detail, but.
When, when you say after-school, could you, is, is the purpose to, what's the purpose of that?
So the purpose of the after-school open chat would be for, to allow more flexibility for teachers and staff when their school day is over. We would be in their building to allow them the opportunity to come in and talk to us and share their feedback, their comments.
So.
It's providing more opportunity for people to come in and talk.
So, so is the thought that during the school day, that there's not sufficient opportunity because of scheduling? And so by having it after, lack of a better term, after the instructional day, that it would just give people the opportunity?
Yeah, that's the thought behind it. Yep.
Okay.
If there's any other.
See, it, I, I mean, if, if you have a action called open chat, and I think that's by tradition, something that's occurred, if you're providing some people the opportunity, but not others, it doesn't seem fair, right? And, and I don't know if there's a, a cost associated with, with either, but my sense would be that if there was a cost, it would be cheaper to do it after school than during school when teachers are supposedly teaching. Is that, is that a fair?
Well, our feedback was, our feedback was just that it kind of changes. I'm just wondering if it's more now a forum or communications. Visitation, just by sheer name of the term, is visiting schools and classrooms to see instruction and kids and things of that nature. So that's just been our feedback was as soon as you go after school, I think it changes the dynamic. Do we want time for parents to come in? And I'm just wondering if it's, if it's open chat, you know, teachers are absolutely important and are there other opportunities that the board might consider for getting feedback from numerous stakeholders? So.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a, that's a great point. We should possibly consider maybe other committees. I think we will as we get further down into the strategic planning process where other committees and, and participants are identified for that, that, that specific feedback. It seems that that's going to be something down the road. We currently though have this, this visitation committee that has this, as tradition, already this open chat that I'm aware of, right? And, and so I would, I would guard against opening it up to other constituents at this time, but just focus on the, the current constituents and find it, find a way to be more of, well, it's more available, user-friendly, right? The availability to be, to be more open than, than restrictive, I guess, is, is what I think I hear Richard saying.
Yeah.
Is that, is that?
And I'm not saying what, nobody's doing anything wrong. I think it's just giving people more opportunity. It's not like we're encouraging people to, it's just if someone feels they want to come in and talk to us, we're giving them every opportunity possible to do so. That's how I'm looking at it.
Within reason though, I mean, you could, it, it'll be targeted, it'll be specific. And, and much like we do public comments, people will be, hey.
Just like the open chats we've done in the past. It would be.
And it'll be controlled in a way that would, would not be, you know, a free-for-all. It would be if, you know, as we do here for public comments, if someone has a comment to make, you know, state your name, what's your issue, please limit your, otherwise the committees could be there for days. And that's not the objective, right?
Can I make one, one observation just on that? And John, you kind of just said it. I think my initial reaction is does, I think it'll be interesting to see what the charter is because it would, I think it does start to expand what the visitation committee is into visiting the schools and being an observer to being like a visitation plus employee feedback committee, for lack of a better term. But I would say, you meant the point just now, you compared it to public comment. Somebody comes up and states their name. I think that it would be helpful for anyone, for, to have these open chats documented so that it's not just a bunch of like anonymous statements that are going to be very hard to, to verify or frankly even do anything about. My stance is if you, you want to offer an opinion, then you have to stand behind it. So I would just want there to be that level of accountability or documentation on the open chats, if that's the route we go.
Yeah, I would agree with that. That's very important aspect, I think, of, of any feedback, right? Someone should be able to stand behind it and be identified. Any other thoughts on this, Bass?
Being, being on the same committee, I mean, my, the, the way I look at it is because I served on the committee last year, and there were some, let's call it perception, that teacher, let's say teachers basically or employees did not know that we were available. I mean, it came to our attention now, true, not true, we're not going to investigate, but like what Richard's trying to do is to make it more, kind of work on that point a little bit better. Maybe the dissemination of, of the time of the visit among everybody, all the constituents inside that school, inside the building, knowing that the committee is going to be available to meet with you, hear your feedback face-to-face on that day during that specific time. Now, if the idea is that, well, yeah, we would love to, but we're committed, I'm lecturing, I'm, 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 that's what, where, where kind of the idea is like, well, after school, after the last class is given, right? Again, the committee is available. If you have anything to say, please come in, we're available. We might sit for whole two hours, nobody shows up, fine, right? I mean, that's the whole idea is like the availability and the better.
Fair enough, and I appreciate that, that clarification, Bass. I really do. It, it seems to me that regardless of when you would have an open chat opportunity, you're not going to get 100% because even after school, there are teachers that have another hat to wear when they go and they're coaching on the field or assisting different school committees with their extracurricular activities, right? But it, it seems to me that, that affording people opportunities outside of the instructional day is an important accommodation to the degree that there's feedback to have. Just, it's, and you, you don't know until you try. So I, I don't think that's such a, an obstacle for, for us, and I would like to see it move forward. Christian, you got a thought?
Just in the interest of time, because I think when the charter was presented, we can certainly discuss this, but I think this is worthy of discussion, but perhaps we can spend more time with it at the next meeting when the charter is presented.
So I, I think that's a fair point. The only thing that I would suggest, since I think they're meeting before we meet, right? You said next week, right?
Well, the visit, yeah, the visits are next week, next Monday.
Yeah, so the visitations are next week.
And we can't readjust the schedule. I don't think it would require adjusting the schedule though. It's just in addition to the visitation itself.
No, so there's numerous schools going on each day. There's two days, five schools. So how do you do after-school on those two days? It's a, it's a complete readjustment of the schedule.
Well, I would see it as so. You do, I think we're doing CCHS, Lee Road, Cornwall and Hudson Monday, right? Then after-school, we could do, for example, this is just the high school from what 2:15 to 2:45, then go over to this school, maybe host two schools in one school, you know, it's.
So I just want to.
So if I could, just in the interest of time.
Because I have the history on all of it.
Well, let's do this because I don't want to get into the, the weeds in terms of, I, I'd like to get more on the principal basis and get the vibe on, from, from the board. Is, is everyone in agreement that having an opportunity for open chat?
Yeah, I think.
And the availability, expanding the availability beyond what we're seeing right now or have seen in the past? Does that make sense? Does everybody kind of go?
For this visitation.
Hold on, Bass, can I finish my thought or let you clarify my thought?
Go ahead.
Is, is everyone kind of in agreement? Is that kind of like the, the census of the, of the board on that? Or we don't want to provide the opportunity for this open chat to be more available?
It's not about not wanting to provide an opportunity. I'm just speaking from personal experience in, in the work I do. When we hold feedback sessions, there's an expectation something's going to change as a result of the session. And I just don't know that we're in a position to, to give that indication, right? And so I just, I would want to make sure people coming understand what the purpose is really clearly and that folks that are representing the board also understand. And I trust my colleagues to do that, but I just want to make sure that the folks coming also know this is an opportunity for dialogue, but feedback is not necessarily something we can react to. That's just my concern.
So, so I think that's a fair consideration. And I think in the charter that I did review, there, there was a section that stated unequivocally that there was no decision-making authority by that committee at all. And it was just to observe and receive feedback, I believe. So, but I, I do understand the importance of managing people's expectations. So Louis?
And I think on the heels of Christine as well as another point, the people coming to say something may be looking for a deliverable on the back end, that it is undeliverable because of the nature of what you said about the charter, there is no action to be taken. So it may create, it may recreate a frustrating scenario for someone coming to vent or to say something, here's my concern or problem, that really the entities can't act on.
I don't know what the entities are, but.
Or the review, the, the board, the board, the, the people, you know, listening to it and or, and or, you know, the people listening to it, to, to, what are the action items? Because like you said, in the charter, you, you're right, it said something about there's no action, official action that they can take or some words of that nature were in the charter. But I, I think, I think my opinion is we're, we're mixing two, two potentials here. The visitation committee, which, Bass as well, I was the chair, I was on it for three years as well, to visit the schools and to give feedback on the, the educational environment, the condition of the schools, the tempo, the feel of the school, what's the school like, what's the, what's the district office and or like? We went to BOSI's one year, saw them and saw where our, where our extended students go to. Now we're getting into like, I think whatever brand term you use, Brendan, like an employee feedback session. Maybe there's opportunities here to leave visitation as it is, but then create another entity or committee that does do that, that does do the, the chat sessions. I'd hate to rush into stretching visitation into something it kind of wasn't, you know, designed to be and, and having some, some morph of it. That's just a concern, that's all.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, that, that thought. My, my sense is that this is already happening and it has happened in previous visitation committees, this open chat thing. It's not a new construct. It's something that's been happening and that, as I heard Richard articulate, the availability of it because of the limited time on station at any one school limits those who may want to participate in that from actually participating. And so the solution that's being proposed is to provide more available time for, for those who want to provide a chat or a comment that, to make that happen. So, so, so I, I, as much as I'm hearing people's expressed concern, I'm not hearing anyone in objection to making the open chat unavailable or, lack of a better term, not available in the way that Richard has suggested, which is after-school. Is that, is that a fair way to characterize it or?
I have a, can I add a helpful analogy to this that I think will resonate with everyone on the board? So last year, when we were discussing changing our public comment feedback policy, we all agreed with the goal of providing more feedback or more direct feedback to public comments, right? Top line, we were all in agreement. It was about how do we do it? And we had a lot of discussions and we had to go back and change our policy so that it reflected the true consensus of the board. We didn't implement the policy beforehand at the very last minute when it was clear that everyone agreed on it. We did, I think we did it like that meeting. But we didn't, what I hear, what I'm hearing here is we're going to write a charter and that charter will reflect all of these new things that we're doing, but the charter's not done, the board hasn't seen the new charter, but we're going to implement that stuff anyway.
So, so just to clarify, I don't, hold on, Bass. Just to clarify, and I appreciate the thought, there's nothing new being proposed.
No, there is, there is. It's an expansion, an expansion is something new. I mean, it's a change.
No, 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 no.
It's a change.
As I understand it, and not to get into the semantics of it at this late hour, but as I understand it, the open chat has always occurred, but it's occurred in a restrictive way that those who want to participate felt that they couldn't. And all this is doing is opening up that opportunity. There's nothing new about it. It's just opening up the opportunity, whether it be after-school, before-school, or on a weekend or at a football game. I'll leave the details to the, the administrators, the, the committee members and that constituents, but there's nothing new going on there. Nothing new whatsoever. So I don't think that's a fair characterization.
To Christine's point, I think there is a perception that it will be something, and when you're, you're making it more prominent, I think that it will be, I think the clear takeaway would be that there is a, there will be more kind of feedback sought and that perhaps the expectation would be there that it would be acted. And I just think that's something that we need to tread into carefully. And I was, my assumption throughout this conversation was that the charter would address that more directly and more defined. I think you're, you're right that there, these open chats have been held, but there's never really been a, a discussion as to what would be covered there, what the parameters were. And my hope was that this charter would define those exactly. So to expand that, that thing, the open chat, which has always been kind of nebulous, before we have really defined what it is, I think is a mistake. And so I would clearly object to it, not object to it in the future. I'm saying I would just like to see what the parameters are before we expand it.
Okay, so that's, I think, I think that's fair. All right, so, so, so what I'd like to do then, right, and I think you've articulated a, a good position, right, is, is just to take the, and before I do this, I'll ask Christian, let me just finish my thought and then I'm coming to you, is, my thought is just to, to gauge the, the temperature on this for the, the board because we are facing this date of next week, which is before we meet and review that, that charter. We've had a couple of, of highlights about that charter, but I, I think it's important to get the, the gauge of the, the board and the census of the board tonight, whether it be for or against. Let, let, let us figure that out tonight before this visitation committee meets with the building principals and the facilities and, and possibly teachers next week. So, but that's where I'm thinking right now. Christian, what do you have to say?
So I'd just like to add a teacher perspective on this because this is mostly with teachers. I would, as a teacher, appreciate any type of opportunity if you make it more convenient. If you had visited my school today, you would not have been able to talk to me because I taught eight periods straight because COVID is now upticking and we had a huge number of people out. eight periods straight because COVID is now upticking and we had a huge number of people out. So the point is, I would have not had the opportunity because there would not be even one second during the day that I could have talked to you. On the other hand, in my district where I teach, I know I will be able to see four or five of my board members this Thursday because they're coming to the Veterans Day celebration. And just like last year, three of them gave me 20 minutes, a relatively small teacher in a much larger district, a chance to listen, mostly just talking about what we're doing well. And here are some things that you might want to spend time with. And I've had four or five opportunities as a teacher in a much larger district to talk to at least half the number of people who are here tonight. And I think that's a useful thing, both for the board members and as well as the teachers. And it is not simply just to criticize or to say what's wrong. It's to have a grounded sense and another source of information on what is happening in the district. And if you're just making it more convenient by saying voluntarily after hours, we're available if you choose to talk to us. I think that is reasonable and just not changing the scale or scope of what the visitation committee has done in the past. So I'm not sure what the problem is. And I think that I appreciate the teachers who, when I was campaigning and I knocked on their door because they live in the district, secretaries of the Special Education Department from the past, gave me an insight into how the district works that has made me hopefully a better and more effective board member. And I can't see the downside to that.
Okay, Christian. So thank you for that. What I'll do at this point is just, I'm going to poll the board and I'm looking at Bass and we'll just work around. So the proposition is, open chat, greater availability, let the visitation committee with the administrators work out the details of when that availability will be during the next week when they meet at the various, or visit the various buildings.
Logistically, I just think that's unclear. We're a week out to ask the administrators and come up with a new schedule next week. So I'm all for, if the board goes with.
Open chat, greater availability, but do it in a manner that follows the cadence of what I would expect of my administrators. That's give everyone advance notice that we can communicate out. All the things that you're talking about would not be accomplished if we're trying to ram this in next Monday and Tuesday.
So whether, not trying to ram anything down, I'm trying to accommodate the ability for teachers to come and provide feedback, whether it be positive, which I would hope it be, because the whole purpose behind this initiative is to collaborate, cooperate, and actually ensure that we are striving and achieving a more positive work environment. That's really the overall object. And the only way that you can do that, if you want to know something, you have to ask somebody, right? Hey, how am I doing, right? So I want the detail.
I'm just saying it just doesn't have to be next week. I agree with that.
So I don't want this to be hinged on the charter because that's, I'm not sure what the timeframe for a charter, which is kind of novel in itself because it's the first one that's not being mandated by New York State. But I want it to be in unison with the time of this first round of visitations that we are conducting. And so, again, my motion for consideration is for the board to support this expanded availability, additional time, before, after, if we had a community lunch at every school, obviously it could be happening then, but it's not. We're not there yet. So again, are we in agreement of doing that and linking it with this round, which I would say, as much as we're meeting next week, the final report for this round will not probably be in front of the board till probably December. And the details of how that additional time can be worked out between the visitation committee and central office and individual buildings, that would be the expectation. I just want to gauge the interest of the board of supporting that, knowing that the drop dead date would hopefully be before the report is issued in December, right, for that additional opportunity. So basically, yea or nay, you're either for that idea or you're against it. Bass, what do you say?
Sure, thanks, John. I know, I like to have a discussion. I mean, I tried twice, this is my third time. Let me say something. Again, as a member of this committee this year, as a member of this committee last year, I felt that, I call them the constituents, doesn't have to be a teacher, might be, you know, somebody working in the cafeteria, custodian, wherever. It is an opportunity for them to make ourselves available to hear what's going on. Now, I think, who mentioned kind of the whole environment, Jim maybe, or, I mean, tonight, somebody said like the whole environment, how things are going on inside the school. Yes, it is something for us to see. There are like a lot of things that we can see, like somebody giving a class, for instance. But there are things that we cannot see. And this is kind of where the opportunity is for the teacher, for the employee to come and tell us something. I mean, might be, doesn't have to be negative. Might be something very positive. They might get like, you know, I mean, there's something doing an excellent job, not getting enough credit or whatever. Might be that kind of comment, right? So this is kind of what it is. If it is not convenient enough during the day when we usually schedule those visitations for everybody to come and take that opportunity, really, and talk to us, then what Richard is saying, kind of after school, you're saying kind of football game, I mean, whatever it is, it is just a very simple idea. Make ourselves available to them to come and give us the comments, positive, negative, doesn't matter. That is one. Two, going back to the charter, like we can't make decisions, absolutely. We are a board committee. Our job is to go do the visitation, get the feedback, bring it to the full board. That's what the charter means when it says it's not a decision-making body. It is a committee. It's a board committee. We get the feedback, we bring it to the full board, and then the board would make the decision, not the committee.
Thank you for that, Bass. Just to restate what I heard, you'd be in favor of that, having the open chat expanded, make it more available. And for the details of when that occurs to be between the visitation committee, central office, and the building principals.
You're right. I'm in favor of it, but when I go back to what Terry, I mean, mentioned, I am always in favor of like advanced knowledge. I feel it's premature for next week. So if we can agree on it, maybe for the spring, you know, but not for next week.
We're saying that it would be done before the committee provides its report in December. So it would be part of this round.
For next week's visitation, I'm not in favor of changing what we've done all along.
I'm sorry?
For next week, I'm not in favor.
I'm not saying next week. I'm saying for this round. And I would consider this round being this part of the school year, right? The visitation committee.
No, we're doing it twice here.
On a different day, exactly.
Right. So this time around, it's premature. For next time, if we approve, yes.
Okay, so you're against it.
For this time?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so for the fall of '23, visitation round, you're against.
No, I'll go with whatever we've done all along. I'm not going to change it, yeah.
Yeah, you're, right, got it. Good. That's, I just wanted to clarify because I was thinking yes, now I'm thinking no. Now I know no. Richard?
So yes, I'm in favor of exploring it, doing it between next week and the December report. So that gives us like a month, a little over a month. Yep.
Okay. Christine?
Yeah, next round.
Okay, thank you. Carl?
Yes.
Carl, yes. Brendan?
No for this round, yes in theory. Just don't see the rush to have it just like it was last year. I think that would be.
Yep, great. Thank you. Christian? Got it. Louis?
I'm not in favor of it in this round. I think we're forcing it, we're pushing it. There's enough resistance here to why have to have even the vote to push it forward. Sounds like we're making something that doesn't have to happen this round. But for the future, definitely exploring the idea of expanded office or chat hours.
Thank you. Jim?
I'll give a qualified, like a yes, if possible. I don't think we need to force it. Obviously, we're saying we have a month, but you know, Thanksgiving is in there and obviously next week is too soon. So the days are dwindling. So if it's possible and can be done, great, but I don't think it needs to be forced for something new. And you know, certainly echo everybody else's sentiments that doing it in the spring is great, but you know, so yes, if possible.
Okay. Thank you for that. For the record, I am in favor of that. Which leaves us in a deadlock for, for, for against. And as the board, in order to move anything forward, we would need a majority of the board. And we don't have five votes because that would be the majority of the votes. So this will fail. I appreciate everybody's articulation on their positions. And I encourage the visitation committee to go forward, conduct their meetings, and continue the good work of finalizing the charter. So we can rework this issue in the future. Okay. Any other items on that, Richard?
No, I think that's it.
Okay, good.
I think we took long enough.
So, yeah, I appreciate everybody's time on that, too. Any other committee business on that? I have two things that I would like to add. Everyone saw Terry's request regarding the DEI committee. To date, Christian is the only board member that has come forward as a person willing and desiring to be on that committee. I think we should have at least an alternate also designated. I'm happy to be that alternate at a minute. I'm sorry? Oh, okay. But anyhow, just so you know, I think that committee is scheduled to meet at the end of the month, Terry? So we can talk more about that as a board. But for as it stands right now, Christian will be the folk. And then we'll have other delegates. Okay. Any other items to discuss there? I do want to give the board a quick update on where we are with some of the board goals, in no particular order. We have board self-evaluation as a goal for this year. And part of that is finding the appropriate mechanism. I think Jim and Terry and I have discussed that. It would appear that we currently have SUPERVAL, and they have a module that would expand our use of that software into the board's purview as well. And so we'll look to make strides on that and hopefully by December, come back to the full board with a recommendation. Also, in terms of positive work environment, Jim, Terry and I have been talking about survey providers, you know, engagement survey providers. We've identified three with a possible addition, maybe four firms. We've received, I think, what I would call bids from two of them. We await a bid from a third. And we should get that sometime this week. So I think over the next, by the next meeting, we should have something for consideration for the whole board as it pertains to moving that forward. And then at our next work session in December, we'll have more information as pertains to that roadmap in terms of how we might go about building out a strategic plan, okay? As a quick update. That takes me then to the consent agenda. And in the interest of time, I'm just going to ask that if anyone has an item of the consent agenda that they would like to be pulled from consideration or further discussion, to let me know. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Some moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second?
I would like to pull one item.
Ah, sure, okay.
Number two, personnel.
Personnel actions pulled. Okay, so got ahead of ourselves here. So items three through eight.
Some moves.
Second? Thank you, Christian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay, great. We'll move on. That motion passes. So the second item is personal actions. Can I have a motion?
Some moves.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Louis, from the second. Discussion, Christian?
So I'm interested in, or I'd like more clarification on, is the 4B resolution to create an additional position. And particularly this second, whereas it says that seeks to add this position due to increased needs at Cornwall Central High School. In fact, some expansion on what the increased needs are, given that we have to add more students. I know we voted on the placements at our previous meeting, but why do we need an additional teacher's aid at this point in the year?
Good question, Christian. Thank you for that. Terry?
Yes, this is special education-based, which needs will change throughout the year. You can have students move in. And as changes evolve over the course of the year, you'll see this pop up from time to time. Dr. Harrington, anything additional?
No, just a child with very specific needs that calls for an additional aid.
Was this a placement that was, we voted on at the previous meeting for the placements? So we approved some placements and changes amendments to?
This was an amendment to an IEP that requires an additional staffing member.
Thank you.
All righty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Nope. Motion passed. Okay. That brings us to our recognition of visitors, our second round. Is there anyone who is still with us this evening that wishes to come forward and be recognized? We have two. Hold on. Please come forward, just grab a mic. Thank you for staying with us. And.
No.
You're fine, you're fine right there. Just let's make sure the mic's turned on. Just bear with.
I know it's late. I appreciate you letting me talk in front of you. And just want to say hello. My name's Pete Violetti. I have three kids in the Cornwall school district. And I'd like to express some concerns that I have in the special ed in the school district here. Special ed is lacking here in Cornwall. It needs help. And for the record, I've never been given a survey on how things have gone for my family here. I'm going to say Cornwall is a great district. If you're in sports, athletic, you're an above-average student, without a doubt, it's a phenomenal school district. I'm not denying that. I have two kids here that they're flourishing. They're doing great socially. They're excelling. They're happy here. However, not every student falls into this category. There is and always will be a population that requires extra help, support. There are kids who have a hard time because of things like anxiety, depression, learning disabilities, mental illness. These kids deserve as much of a fair chance in their education as any other student. The children belonging to this group, they're not being adequately supported. They're not made to feel as though they have a chance to be successful. These kids are often denied the appropriate support services. These kids are often denied the appropriate support services. Just because the services they're offered on paper, it doesn't mean that they're always approved or granted to the student. This district has a practice of displacing kids who they deem unable to succeed in Cornwall and putting them into special placements outside of the district. For a child who is severely struggling, this is absolutely necessary. But however, oftentimes, this is done to kids who are capable of succeeding here in Cornwall as an alternative to actually providing special ed services in district. This practice is harmful to many kids and families as these alternative placements are all at least a half an hour away. And with numerous stops along the way, it can be over an hour on a bus each way, adding an additional two hours to their day. The student is isolated from their community and their peers. This is not right. For a school district that preaches inclusivity and equality, puts kindness banners all over the windows here, you're not practicing what you're preaching here, you're not. I'm asking, why is this the case? Why? Is there a lack of funds? Does more money need to go to this area? You said about the lottery, what would you do? Maybe that's the problem, I do not know. Is it the law firm that you have that's dealing with the special ed in the schools? I don't think that they're giving good advice to these people here behind me. Something is awry. You're the administrators. You have an obligation to the families of Cornwall to ensure every child can succeed. I call on all of you to look into this further, deeper. Numerous children and their families deserve better. This school district could do better. I'm speaking out because I hope I can prevent other children and families from going through the difficulties and suffering mine has experienced here. Thank you for hearing what I have to say and granting me the opportunity to speak for you, in front of you tonight. I wouldn't have stayed here over three hours if I didn't feel it was important. If this can help one kid, one family going forward, because it's too late for mine, in this area, it was well worth me sticking around and letting you know what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vialletti. Anyone else?
John Heinz. I wanted to end on a positive note tonight. My colleague, Stephen Cervino, was named a New York State Master Teacher today by Governor Hochul. Yeah, we can applaud for him. I get to brag about my coworkers that I basically call a family. There's now four New York State Master Teachers from our math department at the high school. Cindy Klein was the first one to get into the program. She's finished it. Mike Flannery has since retired and I'm glad Stephen's now part of that crew. So, we have an awesome math department and I'm looking forward to the rest of them getting into it as well.
Who's the fourth one, John?
He left his self out.
Thank you, Mr. Cardy.
Your humble servant. Our humble servant. Thank you for that update, John, and congrats to all.
You gave me the fifth one that quick, yeah.
Wow, right. Funny. Alrighty, with that, hearing no other people coming forward, I ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.